Good evening. The regular board meeting of the Richmond, the regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sherri, if you could please read our mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that powers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you.
Roll call, please. Candace?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I'm here, we have a call.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
Oops, I have two supports.
Who's?
I'm gonna do Sherri.
I do.
You know, I had one from you too. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second it?
Second.
Angela, was that you?
No.
Sandy?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Mr. Waltsley?
Before you, you have a revised personality report with the highlighted change. We have some resignations in the district. Ms. Askew, our bus driver, resigned. Mr. Dennison, one of our custodians resigned. Mr. Rehneer resigned from the NHS advisor position, still a teacher here. And Pam Daly, our community liaison and power school coordinator, is resigning. New hires, we have, I apologize if I butcher anybody's name, Ms. Bartolomanti, lunchroom supervisor. Ms. Parker, a custodian, was been hired. Ms. Kennedy, lunch supervisor. Ms. Giannacola, preschool aide. Ms. Peebles, a lunch supervisor. Ms. Pinch, first Lego League coach. Ms. Schwartz, our new GSRP lead teacher. Ms. Walden is a childcare aide for the AM and PM. Ms. Warham, another childcare aide. Mr. Wilson, a recent graduate, is hired as a custodian. Mr. Yost was hired as the social studies Spanish teacher at the high school. Some appointments, these are already hired by the board but are moving into different roles in the organization. Ms. Agarley, we have a culinary arts professional with the total number of para pros, we didn't need as many of one, so we shuffled them around. This is desperately needed in that program, especially she is teaching on her prep, so extra set of eyes in there helps out. Ms. Adala Hakim was hired as a special ed para pro. She will be our English language learner para pro who will work with students based on WEDA scores. Mr. Day is a fall event coordinator as well as a middle school assistant football coach. Mrs. Kelly was appointed as Schedule B for March's reading month advisor for the middle school. Ms. Merrill, Merrill, excuse me, is staff health and wellness chairperson, but you'll be hearing more about that in the coming board meetings. Ms. Rosenberg was a preschool aide, she's moving to the GSRP associate teacher. And Ms. Wachinski is the middle school health and wellness chairperson for the building. There were no errors in the minutes that were brought to my attention, and I had no questions regarding the claims and accounts.
Thank you. Anyone have any other discussion?
Yes, I have question for the class advisors at the high school. Do you happen to know what the status of those spots are?
We have a couple of the teachers resigned from one. For instance, Mrs. Shagna resigned, at least she was a freshman, she's put in for the sophomore, so we're meeting on Wednesday to confirm, I mean with each of the deans of students to go through all the Schedule Bs. I believe there are still a couple Schedule Bs that we do not have anybody yet for, for the advisors, but I believe when I look at the net, two of them will be filled, so we're working on that.
Okay. And then my other question, we have teaching positions that we weren't able to fill to start the year, so can you just kinda let us know what's happening?
Yep, absolutely. We have a high school math and a high school science position in particular that are being serviced right now by a long-term sub. I believe it's our building substitutes. Their lesson plans and everything are being done by other teachers in those content areas so that the sub can instruct. We have a elementary Title I teacher, that's not directly in front of kids immediately, it's an urgent need. We have some internal candidates that are interested, but we're looking to have a plan in place if we choose an internal candidate to backfill their position. And we have the counselor position that's still out there. I believe we have one candidate that we've reached out to that recently, or we recently got their name for, so we'll be reaching, filling those. We are not having a whole lot of luck getting math, science teachers, particularly at the high school. It's not unique to Richmond, but it is a challenge, so we are spreading the word, spreading it on Facebook, trying to promote personal Facebooks, people to get them outside if you have someone interested. I will share later on, I know there's a push this September and October with our legislators to change what they approved in July, where instead of being out 12 months, now it's required they can't be back in the school for nine months, trying to eliminate that so that we have some teachers that may have recently retired who might still be interested in teaching. We still have quite a few teachers teaching on the prep and we're trying to, trying to eliminate that to give them a break in the day, because it's an exhausting day, a long day for them, so. But that's where we are with our open position.
Have you reached out to like student teachers, or are they doing that at this point?
We are, we have a, we have one student teacher. We, I did reach out to Jamie, what was the gentleman's name from, well, he works with Oakland now, the student teacher, he was at your HR group, Michael Chipwell?
Mike.
Mike, yeah. I think it was last time. I reached out to him because he works for Oakland to see if we can get student teachers, to see if we can account their hours, if we can put a teacher with them, and then they just roll into being hired. We, I've learned about a program called hashtag teach, which is a unique program where someone basically has the degree. They've passed the teacher certification, but they have not done the student teaching part, and so they've gotten what's called an interim certificate. We actually have one of our candidates that we've hired through that process.
Okay.
We're trying to be creative in finding, but this is, I said in a couple of years, this is the tip of the iceberg for all the teacher shortages, so.
So then, just, the teachers that are substitutes in that math and science and someone else is doing the lesson plans, is that additional work, or it's the lesson plan for the same class that they're teaching?
It's, we're paying them as additional work for the teachers that are doing it, because it is not, it may not necessarily be the course that they're teaching.
Okay. All right, that was my question. All right.
We are compensating them for the time that they're doing a lot of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we have a presentation, Spotlight on Instruction, English Language Learners with Ms. Taylor.
Maybe you need to enter the code to get that, if not, I can pull it up on my screen for some reason. Jamie, can you see if Lisa's up there for you? Thank you. If not, I'll pull it up on my screen. We can do that. Let's just do it that way.
She's right here, Brian.
Thank you, Lisa.
Right, so thank you. This is one of my, I know it's hard to believe, but it's actually one of my absolute favorite topics in all of education. A little background about me is that, you know, I started my teaching career in Las Vegas, but what you may not know is that I taught pretty much all EL students. I didn't teach my first Caucasian student until four years into my career. We had intense training on EL, how to analyze WEDA scores, how to incorporate vocabulary acquisition into our daily lessons. Teachers out there have to be TESL endorsed in order to get their license, so this is a very passionate topic for me, and I'm just really excited to share what we've developed. And this is Dawn Maycar, who is transitioning into the EL role, and so this is just an exciting time for both of us to be able to present the program that we're moving forward with this year.
It's so exciting that for the first time, we have 75 students that are labeled as English learners in the district. That's the highest number we've had. Three years ago, we were at 44 students, so that's a pretty significant growth we've had. Our, we, I think a couple weeks ago, you heard that we had 14 languages being spoken. We're now at 15. We added a foreign exchange student from Italy, so we have 15 languages being spoken in the district. Most commonly, we have Spanish, and then runner up is micro, micro-nation. Oh, yes, yes, micro-nation. So we have a broad variety of languages happening in the district for students to be exposed As you can see, every grade has students who are English learners. If you look at the numbers, they reflect the number of identified English learners, but not all of these children are receiving support. Support is based on what we'll describe to you in just a bit about, they're called WEDA scores, and we service students based on the number of students that have the lowest WEDA level, not the number of kids in a grade.
So talking about those WEDA scores, these are the can-do descriptors, and what they highlight are is what students are able to do. I love that, that positive spin, this is what students can do, and they are arranged by clusters, so preschool, kindergarten, 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. So if you score a 2.0 WEDA score at a kindergarten level, it might look different than if you were a 2.0 in like, let's just say, the grade level. So when we talk about language as a scaffolding support, you can actually look at each of the level and decipher in the four main areas that they're tested in, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, where they actually fall. And then their general composite score is generated for us to actually create that WEDA score, and that helps us determine the level of support that is needed for that language. Anybody have any questions?
When do we do the WEDA test?
February. We do the screener at the beginning of the year for any new students. We have 30 days from the first day of school, unless they are enrolled on the second day of school, then we have 10 days to do those WEDA screeners. And then they're identified, and then everybody takes the test, unless they've exited the program at a 4.8 score higher, then they're exited automatically from the state.
Thank you.
So this is just a snapshot of some of the standards that are actually involved in English language. It stands for English Language Proficiency. There are five standards, of course, the language that is involved in the four cores, language arts, math, science, social studies, but then there's also standards for communication for social and instructional purposes in a school setting, because we all know that sometimes speaking to students in the conversational language is very different than that academic language. And of course, we know that one of the oldest findings in educational research is the strong correlation between vocabulary and reading comprehension, so really focusing our efforts on that vocabulary acquisition to be able to help students succeed.
Most of our students fall into that developing category, Level 3. This is actually where a lot of our instructional strategies lie as well, so our instructional strategies that we work on are geared toward that Level 3. Those can-do descriptors that Musea went over help teachers plan those lessons.
So just to kind of give you an idea about this, expanding is your 4.8 range where they can be exited from the program. So just kind of giving you a breakdown, even though you saw we had so many EL students, K through 12, you can see that they could still be a ninth grader and still in that 3.0 range, that their, our highest area is still that developing language. So we are so proud to be able to form a district EL team for this year. We have three volunteers, one representative from each building, that are going to be sent to PSYOP training from Wayne Risa. It is an intense 10-session training. Our high school representative is Julie Nader. Our middle school representative is Jamie Clausen, and our elementary representative is Nicole George. And we are going to get PSYOP trained, and you can see that there's PSYOP specifically for elementary, for secondary people, as well as administrators going into being of this core and look for those can-do and high-yield instructional strategies geared specifically for EL students. So, Imagine Learning, one of the things that we grant funds through, through our bilingual grant is English, is Imagine Learning. Basically, there's a court case in 1974, I know I'm getting really technical, Lau versus Nichols, where they actually say that you actually have to by law provide language acquisition to EL students. Imagine Learning is a phenomenal program, and this is what I brought back here from Nevada. We use this all the time, it was amazing, fantastic results. They say just 10 minutes a day will drastically increase language acquisition for all EL students. So we do have a plan for students to be able to engage in those minutes, K through 5, and it even has Imagine Math, because there's the misconception that math is a universal language, that EL students will just naturally pick up math, and that's not necessarily true. If, you know, Sam is walking three blocks, you know, and they visualize blocks, they can't conceptualize blocks, also is another word for neighborhood in the street, so there's that misconception. So Imagine Math is also geared toward that language piece for mathematics, for their development as well. And we are launching that this year, so 10 minutes for K-2 and 15 minutes for 3-5. The Seal of By Literacy, this is brand new to Michigan, and this is really exciting because, you know, students should be proud of the fact that they can speak multiple languages. And so part of what we can offer, not only to students that naturally come to us from other countries and other backgrounds, we can also offer it to our like Spanish 3-4 students. But they can take a proficiency test their second semester, and they can actually get the Seal of By Literacy on their transcript so that everybody, colleges and workplace, can know that they are, you know, multilingual, that they're able to speak multiple languages, and it helps them being able to succeed after high school. So this is brand new, and we are testing our first round of students this year, second semester.
Richmond's staff and administrators know about Language Line, which is on Richmond's website. If you go to Richmond's website, staff, there's a dropdown for Language Line. Teachers and staff know to click on that, they just have to provide a code that we've all given to them. This is a service that we pay for, it has over 240 languages and dialects available to help staff communicate with families. Very easy to use.
Is that like, you can send letters to parents and put it in their language, is that, what that is?
This is so you can actually talk.
So you can speak?
Yep.
Okay. Isn't there something, I mean, we do it at my building, there's something that can translate the letter to?
They do documents, it just takes more time for them to communicate the documents back, but the Language Line will connect you to somebody instantly, so we use it a lot for parent conferences. If there's, hey, your child did great today in class type of phone calls, those, they're right there, someone speaking any language, 240 right there. The translation services, you just have to help, you know, send them the documents, but we also use our ISD to help translate documents as well. They're very good about helping us with that.
Okay, thanks.
We used it in a student discipline hearing prior to the board hearing. We had an interpreter at one of them, but we used it because the interpreter wasn't available, and so we were able to talk to the parents in their native language, which it's a little longer because you have that translation period back and forth, but like I said, you call, you let them know. There's a few languages that are very rare, so it may take a little bit to find one, but it's nationwide, they have thousands and thousands of tutors.
How nice.
Interpreters, I should say.
And we tested it out one time, and I mean, we instantly were on the phone with someone who spoke German, like it was just, it was really neat to just do that and see how quick and accessible. And now with the Seal of By Literacy, maybe our future students could be in that way too. So we have lots of new supports in place. Still existing support is our tutor from the MIC, actually, I think she starts next week.
She's out this week.
This week. So they come in, teach with the buildings, and they have a list of the students, once again, a 4.8 WEDA score or lower are the targeted students that they see. We, for the first time, are doing an EL para pro. They're gonna be able to do Tier 2 push-in support, so they're pushing into the classroom to be able to help students that are identified, we're of course targeting our lower WEDA scores, and we're actually targeting science and social studies courses, because we know that that technical text has the most challenging vocabulary and texts that oftentimes they don't see the same support, so being able to push into those technical classes will really help our informational text. We are going to be doing an English Language Family Night new to this year, so similar to our Inside of One night, we are going to be having a special night just for English learners. Come, learn some fun games about literacy and mathematics, we're gonna be able to get some translators, so it'll be a really great event. There's more to come with that. I do have for you some samples, I do have to take them back, but samples for you about our at-home literacy connections that we're really proud of, putting these together, you can see that we have alphabet cards, letter sounds, we have phonics, phonetic awareness, just things that parents can ask questions about when they're at home. We're working with ISD to get these documents translated so that the students can have it in their home language as well, for the families, as well as an English copy as well. And then you can also see in your pouches that we have purchased books because of literacy, and there's levels for each of the families, so obviously, primary will have the, you know, the lower leveled books, and your sight words, and things like that, and then as the higher up you go, the more challenging the text becomes, but all of the bags are actually correlated to K-1, 2, 3, so we know who gets which bag, so to be able to have, and they get to keep those, we want them reading at home. And then once again, we have our EL district team, we're gonna be meeting, learning about PSYOP training, and we're going to be able to, they're gonna work on district and school improvement with us, so putting in all of those wonderful skills that they're learning to practice, and our side of training, so very exciting stuff happening this year for EL, and any others have any questions?
Any questions for the board?
That's exciting.
Really good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our fiscal 2023 budget update from Ms. Shad.
Okay, Ms. Shad and I are gonna do this together, so I'm gonna project some of the documents that you have in your backup, and I will enlarge it so the people out there in the listening audience can actually see it. When the board approved the FY '23 budget back in June, it was built on many assumptions. At the time, the state budget, actually by the time we did it, they had gave us the parameters of what that budget was gonna be, but it wasn't signed into law until July. So since then, we have received some documents in terms of the projected or estimated impact that that state budget will have on Richmond schools. Now, like we built our budget, they built it on certain enrollment counts, certain number of special ed formulas, et cetera, so you'll see on all of these, they are projected. So I'm gonna go over the revenue changes that we can anticipate. After that, we're gonna talk a little bit about, we've already accounted for some of these dollars, because we made the assumption we were getting a $300 per pupil increase, when the actuality came out to be $450, so we spent a big chunk of that already. And then we're gonna, Tammy's gonna talk a little bit about each one of these items and the impact it has that we're going to have to make decisions for. You'll see a lot of them are categoricals, we call those section and a state number, that's a state funded. If it's a Title dollars, it's Title I, Title II. If it's state dollars, it's section, so it's a quick reference. Categorical dollars, I just want to remind the board, can be yearly amendments by the legislator to give us or take it away. For the foundation, they have to say they are cutting our foundation, which politically isn't a good thing to do. But categorical, most, most people, the general public typically do not see or hear about the categoricals, they may hear a large dollar value. So let me talk to you a little bit about Richmond schools. In your document, it's at the bottom, and I know the headers come off, so I'm gonna read it. The first dollar value here is $450, that's the increase in our per pupil allocation, which puts us the second column, which is the foundation allowance of $91.50. You can see, that is the basic for all districts, but as you can see in this, there are some districts that receive $16,000, $12,000, $10,000 more per pupil, or receive per pupil than we do. So the minimum has brought everybody up, and it reduced the number of discrepancies, but it has not eliminated. Based on enrollment that the state has, taking that increase, that increase per pupil, we would receive an additional $668,000. Again, we've already accounted for 300 of that, which I'll show you in the upcoming slides. This next column here is for rural districts, we do not qualify, so we do not receive any funding for that. The next column, which is $155,000, is increased in at-risk 31A funding. This will significantly help us be able to maintain summer school programming for future years, as well as look at other support services that we need for our at-risk students. Our current allocation, not taking the increase, we pretty much have spent every dollar on the FTs that are assigned to certain teachers that teach at-risk programs or classes, special ed, or excuse me, at-risk para pros, some resources and some training, but this will now be allow us to begin planning for next summer with an idea, but we can continue that summer school program. The next column is $168,000, which is 31AA mental health per pupil payment. To date, we have not received any direction or guidance on how that will come to us, what the requirements are. We've heard broadly, but the Michigan Department of Education, the budget was released in July, there's a lot of things that they have to put guidance out and release, from all of these categoricals to student teachers who are getting a, some type of refund for, while they're student teaching, to reduce their cost, basically paid to the student teach, which anybody who's gone through the education that was never afforded that unless you had a grant that paid for it, but to try to incentivize people going into teaching because of that extreme cost of doing your student teaching. So again, 31AA, we have not received any specific guidance for that. The next column here is $258,922, which is a special education reimbursement change, and I'm gonna leave that to Tammy to explain when we get to the next slide, because this isn't, it's not necessarily dollars that, in a nutshell, I'll say it this way, we have special ed costs, and the state has not reimbursed us for the true cost of special ed. This is getting us a little closer to that true cost reimbursement. I'll let Tammy go into a little bit more on when we get to that one. The next column you'll see is, I believe it's 28, or I'm gonna enlarge it because my eye slate isn't as good, $28,005, that is CTE, added cost dollars. This will come in handy, especially now that we've added new programs and begin planning for more for that one. And then the final column is $160, excuse me, $8,000 for school safety. Again, we have not, it's Section 97, we have not been given directives on that, but in general, it can be used for liaison liaison officers. It can be used for, this is where I would charge, as you know, I've, we're working with the architect for the night locks. This would be part of where we could charge it, so it wouldn't have to come out of general fund. So for Richmond, our total change in budget is $1.4 million. Now, with that, I'm going to show you, this probably looks familiar from June. You probably are sick of seeing this, but it's a, I'm going to go down this a little bit. It shows you all the years, but in the yellow column here, it talks about, this is what we use. I changed the 450,000, excuse me, $300 to 450, not 450,000. So when you do take that by the, we were projecting an increased enrollment of 11 FTEs. So when you take that into consideration, it would be about $800,000 in a difference in revenue. But these are all the things that we've already either added to the budget or accounted for based on that 300,000, $300 increase. I want to keep adding zeros to our increase. So you have some of these other costs. These, again, all of these were what we did previously. So in a net right now, just on the per pupil, we're about 112,000 of unallocated dollars from that per pupil increase. So Tammy, I'm going to have you take over here. Again, these are, these are estimates, and we have pluses and minuses all throughout as we've been finalizing the budget, with some of the costs and so forth.
Hey, Brian, this is Sharon.
Whoops. It's karaoke night.
Very. This starts with what our original 22, 23 budget was projected to have revenues over expenditures of about 98,000. And then as Brian explained, there's a $450 increase in per pupil foundation. We originally budgeted a $300 increase, so that means we have 150 to budget. When you take that by our assumed enrollment of 1,537.65 FTEs, you come up with 230,648 in additional money that is coming into the budget. Of that, we already hired one teaching position. I think that was something we did over the summer, but after the original budget was adopted, that cost is about 80,000.
This is approximately teachers' teaching on their prep. As we've done scheduling, we've had to address the staffing issues. We're still tight. I'm going to be honest with you. It may be even that we're looking at adding another teacher as we finalize enrollment and get the levers out of the system, so.
On the next line, we also allocated, as you might recall, from the July, I'm sorry, August board meeting, 16,000 for some plans that is baseball and softball fields. And as Brian mentioned, the increase in special ed reimbursement, that assumes it's 250, just almost 259,000. That assumes that when we do our 21, 22 reports for transportation, which includes special ed transportation, as well as our actual cost report, which is a summary of all the special ed costs, we have to submit those separately to the state. Those will be going in within the next couple of weeks. But that assumes that we have met a required increase in order to get 258,000. If we haven't met that increase, that number will be less. It won't be more, but it could be less. So that's, that's our highest we can get. We're probably in the ballpark, so I don't expect that to change a lot, but it could change some.
Can I interject, Tammy? All the, all of these dollars, the special ed and our per pupil, come in, it's one pot of money, if you can imagine that. I often look at it as we get a special ed allocation, and we charge special ed teachers, or paros, or whoever doing special ed services, to that allocation. There's never enough money in that allocation. So the remaining part of those teachers get charged to the other. Even though it's one pot, I look at it as two. What this is doing is we're going to allow, get more teachers to be charged in the special ed route, which would free up more discretionary money for you to, as a board, to use or allocate. I know there, it's not two pots of money, but visually, that's what I kind of imagine. Just, special ed is very complicated, the formulas and, I bless Tammy every time she's got to deal with special ed because it is not an easy, fiscally to report and account for those dollars. But if you imagine that, it will free up dollars in the general fund to be used for other services. The state has a requirement to maintain special ed funding. So now that they've done that, if they cut it, they will be out of compliance with state law. So this was a very good move on our legislative liaisons who were advocating for this because it basically creates a permanent source of funding. And I say that with an asterisk because anything's possible with our legislators and government, whoever's in charge at the time. But it, it now becomes more strategically, more permanent funding source for us.
Because it's harder to take it away now because that's what you're saying.
Exactly. Where these other ones, the mental health, the 61, and they've all been years. They've cut them, and we've got them one year, and now we have another year. So I'm always cautious on those section grants to not make significant structural costs, people, because we're going to have to reduce it at some point if they're cut. 31A and some of that, we're, they have a hold harmless type of guarantee, like Title I, where you're at least guaranteed 85% of what your previous allocation was. So we build the budget on what we know we're going to have. And if we get more, it's, it's a windfall for us that we can put things back or buy things or implement things for the program or services. So, sorry, Tammy, another long interjection.
Yes. As, as the special ed revenue pie gets bigger, the general ed revenue pie can decrease, so that can be more available to us. Okay. Then we get to the increase in 31A revenue. That's about 155,000. We really do plan, if you go to the next line down, we really do plan to use that money. It's just how we use it, as I mentioned. Summer school is one method of using that additional money. So while we expect that money coming in, we also expect to increase expenditures for at least some of that, a significant amount of that. And the same is true with the 31A mental health revenue. Once, the other day, they told us it could be January before we hear how we can spend that money. So it just takes time. It's a big thing. It takes time to put all the frameworks together and then communicate it and get it approved. There's just a process they have to follow. It takes work. So again, with the 31AA mental health revenue, about 168,000, that too is probably something we will spend on whatever they tell us we can spend. So there's a reduction for that. There's an increase, increase in the 61A career tech money, about 29,000. Again, there's an offset for expending that money in that program, the CTE program. There's a new line for Section 97, school safety revenue, 168,000. And again, once we know the parameters in the next several months, how we can spend it, there will probably be expenditures added to that, so that we will spend a significant amount of that before that program has, as we're supposed to. When you get to the bottom line, if you take all of those changes, the increases in the revenues and the increases in the expenditures, which are negatives, you get to a projected revenue over expenditures for 22, 23 of just under 500,000. So that is somewhat of a discretionary of how you want to spend it.
Again, as you notice on the sheet, that special ed reimbursement, there's not the line at it because we're not adding a new expense. We're just reclassifying, if you will, an expense. So this is now, where we are is, we built this budget on an assumption that we were going to increase 11 FTEs. In your backup, in the documentation, I gave you our head count, which is not FTEs. So for instance, we have approximately 15 students that are counted as a full head in the, in the sheet that you have in your backup, but we only get .33 FTE because they're only here part of the day. So when you start backing out those, even today, we had three requests for records. So that number's actually three less than one we originally. So, but based on current head count, I am, I am very confident that the number that the board chose to use as the 11 increase, we are solid with. And it actually should be higher than that 11 when all the dust settles, when we do count that. So it was a gamble because we don't typically, we haven't in the years past, budgeted for increase, even though all the enrollment numbers tended that way. This we did, and we have more students choosing Richmond than we did last year.
So then that number will change.
Once we get the audited number, that number will change if we have more FTEs, which I don't know the formulas, all those other ones, maybe not CTE, but all those in special ed. But those other ones could also change, too, based on our enrollment count in October. So where we are at this point is, in the past, we've talked about ideas that the board would like to put in the budget, but we held off doing it. I don't know if the board wants to sit and processes for two weeks. And if you want the topic to come back, to have more discussion, I do have some of the items, such as, you know, we talked about an athletic increase. We talked about arts and some of the other program increase. You know, we would be at a position where, based on our current head count, I believe, we're going to be solid with that number. And this increase, there's some discretion of things that the board could put back or put in the district based on our June conversation. Again, we can either have it here, or we can kind of think on it. We can bring it back now that you know this number. If you have any more questions on the number, you can talk about it at the next board meeting. You know, if we were pretty close to that 11 in a number, I'd ask you to hold off because anything can happen. But based on that head count number, I think we're, that 11 is a good number. So if at least we do that.
So Brian, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
On that spreadsheet you gave us, the ones that are in the empty purple boxes, so to speak, are the ones we kind of talked about increasing or putting money towards?
The empty purple box, yes. We talked about increasing athletic budget supplies, uniforms, tournaments, increasing tournament fees, budget for trap, increasing art, band, choir, and robotics. Those are some of the.
Things we talked about.
Yes.
So, so then my thought is, I don't see, unless anybody feels different, and I doubt we do, let's have that, start to have the conversation. Because count day is October 5th. It's coming in, quite frankly, I'd like to be prepared when the news is good to be able to, seriously, you know, to, and I think a deeper discussion on all those purple things, what does that mean?
Right, as far as what's the dollar amount.
Yes.
I was thinking the same thing. And Brian, if we, so what is that dollar amount, again, that we are, we can shoot for? Is that the?
I would say you're looking at the bottom line here, 491.
Okay.
That number, again, makes the assumption when we get the 31A, we got equal 31. That's taking all that out of, out of the mix.
Okay.
Because as an organization, we're going to benefit from those, what I call one-time dollars and hope they renew them next year, the section, section dollars.
Do we put, ever put any of that money away?
You can. You, in, in the budget that you're, you approved in June.
We did.
We put, we had about 97, 98,000 more revenue than expenses. So once we allocated into staffing and everything, we were there.
Okay.
You know, this would be, you know, if we're looking at, I'll just talk off the top of what I've heard in our superintendent's conversation with the mental health, if we want to increase more social workers, that could be used in there. And so, again, it's just a matter of whether we're going to be able to sustain it.
Correct.
You know, we could look at, you know, safety. Again, those are, those are dollars that are, we've accounted for the budget, and we got, we're having expense already booked for it, regardless of what we're doing with that. You could look at our class sizes. Again, preliminary, there are some hotspots. And that's why I said, I think we're going to need probably at least one more FTE. And I say that because it could be a combination of a teacher, it could be a combination of shifting classes. We're trying to do that sooner than later. It could be a secondary, second semester issue where we have a natural break in the semester to bring someone at that point. I would recommend you book the full expense, even though you're only going to use half of it if we end up doing that, that route. So whatever we do, if we're going to add a teacher, I would book the full, full expense towards it. So you have it budgeted for next year.
So are you saying that you're, you're looking right now, it's September 12th, that you are looking, that we're going to need another teacher at some spot?
My preliminary scan of the matrix is, for the most part, we're good. There are some hotspots, and I'm trying to figure out how do we solve that hotspot? Because I don't have a lot of availability of teachers teaching on their prep. Normally, every teacher would have a prep, and I, if we had, we could reduce the class size and ask so-and-so to pick up. I don't have that option as much at the high.
Because of what we're doing already at the high.
The challenge of that is, we're short. So for instance, we have some teachers who are passionate about teaching one cert, but I may need to move into another cert because there's more availability of a person with that cert to fill. And so it's a balancing act of maintaining people's passion and preference of what they teach with what we can actually staff and find. That's going to be our channel, just finding teachers. Elementary teachers are, are still pretty plentiful. And I say that with an asterisk because what today's plentiful is very different than two years ago. But I don't have any special, any, I should, I have very few elementary current teachers that I could even move to another level. So it's not like I can hire an elementary and move them to.
High school.
High school, because I have none that can move to, I have no middle school that I can move to high school that we haven't already done and then create on that one.
So in reality, we should, when we're, when we're going to be having these conversations, the one thing we should look at is that's going to happen.
That, that is.
You're saying that that, so that's, that's something to keep in mind, and that's not anything for us to decide. It has to be done.
I would just like the commitment that I can keep the class sizes down from the board. And if we could at least allocate 80,000 of that, which is typically a new teacher fiker retirement.
That would be the dollar figure.
If we, at least, if that brings us down to four, you know, whatever, 10, 410-ish, that's still quite a bit of dollars that I never thought my career'd ever be sitting here on this conversation.
Exactly.
You know, as a board, you could think, okay, and again, this might be some conversations that you want to further have. But long-term, is there things that, as an organization, you might want to put in? It's not instruction, but it's, it could be, we have nobody that does any communication with our community, other than our principals and teachers and all that, on their free time, myself, Jamie, and pulling stuff together to get out. We don't have a strategic communication plan to our community. In, and it's not a secret, in three years, potentially, we could be going back to this community asking for no increase. Because at that point, if enrollment continues, we need additional classrooms on the middle school. And how do you get that message out there systemically? And I mean, no disrespect to anything that anybody has done, because we're all trying to do our best. But we don't have, whether it's a contract we do with a company to put newsletters and market, whether it's a person you want to look at, you know, you're talking the benefits fiker retirement, probably another 80, 80,000 is when you look at the whole pack, total package. So, I mean, there's still quite a bit of dollars there. But I'm thinking if you look long-term as an organization, you know, my hope is we have budgeted a counselor. I mean, our students have needs that are not only at the elementary, but also at the high schools. Is that something we want to go? The challenge is finding counselors. That is, that is our challenge, finding people is the, you know, there's been conversations, if you wanted to do it, there had been recent conversations, but we have in the past talked about two-tier buses for our start time. We put less kids on a bus, okay? If I use the same number of bus drivers that we have, your payroll cost as an organization doubles.
Right.
Because now your drivers are driving pretty much double the amount. Not only the payroll, but now many of them now qualify for benefits, which would be, it's roughly, I don't quote me on this, I'm going to say about 9,000 on a single subscriber per employee that would opt for. So those are long-term things because our population is changing. We, we are struggling getting bus drivers. I mean, we have probably one of the highest rates of bus driver rate in the northern McComb County area.
So Brian, is that something that the bus drivers, like, have expressed in the past that they would be interested in?
There is a, a handful of bus drivers that stay here because they absolutely love Richmond.
Sure.
They love. But if they could drive a bus and have more hours, we were creative and tried to find, could they do lunch supervisor, and could they do COVID cleaning and use some of their dollars in the past and charge it to the COVID dollar for those that wanted it. There are some that have another commitment during the day, so we'd have to be creative on that aspect. But there is a handful of bus drivers that ultimately, hours is it? We, we, on average, we have two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon for a bus. We, on average, we have two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon for a bus driver. And that's them arriving and leaving at roughly 5:45, 6 o'clock rolling out, and they're pulling back in the bus lot by, you know, 8:15. We try to find stuff for them to do to keep the bus drivers.
Speaking of that, is there any way we could think about maybe using some of this money to help increase the bus driver wage? Because I mean, in all actuality, at four hours, $20 an hour, you're getting $80. I mean, could we make it like, at $150, you get a day to work, kind of like a sub? You know, for a sub, like as I saw, I work for the regis staff, and I get $120 a day just to sub. So, I know they're only working four hours, but they're crucial. If we don't have our students here, we're not able to teach them, so it's a crucial, you know.
If that's what the board wants to look at, I think we need to look at beyond just bus drivers.
Mm-hmm.
We have childcare, because we're using childcare grants that we receive, we're trying to attract people at $15 an hour, while they're making more than some of our paras are making.
Right.
So if we want to, but the hours of that job are kind of hard, too, because you have, you know, 6:30 in the morning to 7:45, 8 o'clock, and then after school till 6:00, you know, it's not the most appealing job from hours perspective to gather people. But if that's something you want to consider, looking at that, then I think we need to have the conversation with multiple organizations, because I'm having the similar conversations with paras who are choosing to stay or go because of finances, you know, we're in an economy that inflation is higher, hopefully it will end soon, hopefully. We've had the conversation previous about food service, we've had, and a lot of our collective bargaining agreements have already settled, so I would just caution the board to spending it all, because at some point, you need to put money away, because when you come back up for contract renewals, and Mr. Jarv, if you don't mind, I'm going to pick on the teachers in a positive way, in order to maintain teachers from outside looking, we really got to keep to the best of our ability to at least give them steps. Because that's what other districts are doing, and when we stop doing that, and we did that because financially, we couldn't do that, but when we did that, we start losing some very good talent. I don't think there's anybody here who would disagree with some of the talent we've lost, because they've had options to go all the way. But what I'm saying is, if you've got money in your bank, and this will send nerves up Tammy's spine over there, at some point, the state is not going to be able to sustain $450 increases, and I'm just going by history in this state, we have never seen this in history. So at some point, when we're back to getting 50 bucks or 100 bucks.
Or taking away.
Or taking away, you've got contracts that you're going to have to keep, because, and we can use this funds in our rainy day, whatever you want to call it, to maintain those contracts, because it is, and I was not here when it happened, but I know, I think Margaret, you were here, and some of you teachers were here, when you have to go to them and say, I need concessions, it is a morale changer, and what I would not want to have happen is, the contracts that we have in place, we can't sustain, and I got to have that conversation, say, I'm either going to have to lay people off to balance it, or ask for everybody to take a cut. And this way, if you've got money in that rainy day savings account, whatever you want to call it, fund bound, you can at least know you can maintain those contracts until they expire and figure out what now you can financially support.
Well, and I think that's why, if we're, if we're going to have these discussions, and we should, then we need to come to the table prepared with, what are we looking at? We have our purples, as Deb said, that's a conversation that we've had, and so it needs to be talked about, okay, what's, what's priority? Because we do have to plan for the future, and we do have to maintain where we're at, but there's also things that, like pay the light bill.
Don't move it, we're saving, no kidding.
Yeah, really. You know, so I mean, that, that's what I think we need to do in the next three or four board, see, no, we did pay the bill. The next three or four board meetings, an agenda item that we continue to talk about, just like we've talked with budget stuff, what's everybody looking at? Because the two-tier transportation, that's, that's even bigger. If that goes into, you're changing school times and all of that, that's a negotiated thing with the teachers, I mean, people, it's not just, let's do two-tiered buses.
Yeah, that is a dominant effect, that.
It is, and that's what everyone has to be aware of, because I saw a lot of shaking the heads, the two-tiered, you know what I mean?
It'd be great if we could do that, but yeah.
But it's reality of what that means.
And actually affects.
And that's how we have to educate.
There are a lot more going on with the buses than just lack of bus drivers. These children, there's three, four to a seat, if they're over, there's a lot more that needs to get discussed, I think.
But, you're, okay, but I just, the nodding of the head was the two-tier, and I just want, so that we look at the picture, and if there's other things with respect to transportation, that's the time to start talking about it.
I would love to talk about that.
So maybe a suggestion, see if you guys would agree with this. Okay, so we need some dollar amounts, because we need to have some ideas what we're looking at. So if we want to look at the pay increase for like our buses, parapros, whatever, Brian, could you get us some figures of where they're currently at, and who, who you think we need to look at, be it our cafeteria people, be it our bus drivers, be it our, you know, whoever, parapros?
Well, how about, how about if we come, but how about if we come back in two weeks? Everybody gets a chance two weeks to look at the purples, talk, what are, what are we looking at? And then, then Brian can look at.
But I need some dollar amounts in the purple.
Okay, you can put dollar amounts in the purple, but I'm saying if we come back with conversation of what everybody's thinking, then we send Brian back with, okay, here's all of what we're thinking, we know what the dollar figures are, and then we start talking from there. Every, it's, it's hard to just sit right now, get this information, and, you know, in my head, there's things that are, that I'm thinking, so give me, give me a little bit of time, we come back in two weeks.
So what do you need to, what do you?
And the dollar values for the purple, I don't mean in their own view, but.
Okay, that's fine.
I will have a rough, based on my conversation with the teachers that have emailed me, based on what I received from athletics, I know there was some conversation, if we did this, it would end or reduce the amount of need for fundraising, I know that was a big topic.
And me.
Yeah, and it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, I'm just going to be honest with you, to manage it with these 501(c)(3) organizations that many of our groups have. Now, we can insist that coaches and so forth, that no, this is it, but that will be a challenge to.
But I, but I also think we, we never truly got accurate information on what it costs to run athletics sport by sport, in my opinion. So it's really hard to say, you know, because we have, we have fundraisers that are going on, and once again, parents' conversations are, that it's to pay for uniforms, and that's not true, from, and then I have other people that say, no, it's not true, it's for this. So again, I don't think we really know what it costs, and in order to put money in that spot, I, I have to know that, I have to know a reality before this.
I don't know, yes.
This district, this board decides, okay, we're going to take $40,000 and plop it in there, and I just use that off the top of my head. So what, what can that do for every sport? And what does, what does it do to fundraising? Because if, if you could have a sport that gets $2,000 more dollars, and man, that just, that's great for it. You could have another sport that $2,000 doesn't even put a dent on what it takes. So that, I, I know I keep harping on it, but we just didn't get.
Well, I will start with what we have, and I will meet with Mr. Trun regarding that, and have him work with coaches and relook at those numbers, to make sure this, is this in the ballpark of what we need.
And is that, is that a good idea, that we come, we come with our ideas and we talk about it in two weeks, let Brian fill the purples right now?
I'd like to fill the purples, I'd like to see him get us some figures on increasing pay, you know, at least get us some numbers on that, so that would be part of that discussion.
And could we have ever thought about giving benefits to, can our bus drivers get benefits?
No, because we don't need a committee, we all have to talk about it as a board. It's got to be, it's got to be.
Especially this one.
This is, this is huge, this is budget stuff, we don't need a committee. We need the entire board. Putting their thoughts out on the table, everybody gets a chance to speak, here's your ideas, we bounce them back, and then we get to an agreement with Brian, that, okay, here's our top four things we can do, or our top five things.
Well, I have a couple of things I'd like to add to the purple list with that.
Can I interject?
Okay.
As far as benefits, currently, they give benefits if they average 30 hours consistent over the course, because it's basically four hours a day, times five days a week, you generally get that 20. It doesn't preclude, you know, from saying, we want to offer single subscriber benefits to bus drivers. Again, just the ballpark, I believe it's about 9,000-ish for a single subscriber, based on the hard cap, I could be off on that one. We have 13 bus drivers, you have 107, 112,000, $127,000 if I map it correctly, that would just be in benefits if the bus, if the board wanted to do that.
And when you're saying pay increases, about to every employee group? Because I think that's what the conversation should be.
Well, I know.
As opposed to just bus drivers or parapros.
Well, I'm thinking our teachers and every, the ones who have contracts are in place.
Everybody does.
Yeah. No, well, like, do the bus drivers have a contract?
They have, they have a two-year contract that the board approved last year, not June of '20 to 2021, and then we extended it this year because it was a two-year. The rate did go up, just to be competitive with neighboring districts to try to retain bus drivers, so, so pretty much, everybody has a contract. So if we're looking at that, we need to look.
Could we do maybe like a bonus, like we've done in the past as well?
One-time dollars makes Tammy a little more comfortable, because it's not a structural expense, but it does benefit everybody.
In reality, that's not, that's not really a bad idea, in the sense that you do some kind of bonus part, and then continue to have the conversation as we go along, okay, what can we do to make increases?
More desirable, yes.
To make, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's not, because, you know, it's that whole idea of, you have this money, and if every employee can benefit something, that's where a one-time thing comes. You know, because it's.
Right, and if we were to do, I was going to suggest that, too. If we were to do just a bonus line, we don't have to keep up with the contract, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, we don't have to even. Well, we don't have to worry about that, if things do get caught.
It would require me to still meet with each bargaining unit, to say, this is what the board would like to do.
Right.
I, there is a slim chance a bargaining unit could say, no, they want to reopen the contract, they want on structure, I would have, obviously, whatever parameters I got from the board.
Never had.
But we've done one-time payments in the past. There are a couple contracts that have retention bonuses that are being paid out in December, but we're using COVID dollars for those. The teacher contract that we just settled puts that on schedule, that, I think it was a 1% this year, if I remember, so we added to the matrix, just to attract, to be more competitive in the matrix side of the argument. But I can, I can talk about pay increases and go by all the employee groups.
Okay.
What, what that would look like, I can revisit the athletic budgets and the art ones that we had, and the music and art, and choir, and robotics that we had for the previous.
And if anybody has anything added, email it.
Yeah, I can email it to him.
Can we, can we also look at the bonus part? Just like a dollar figure, because, you know, it's that whole thing, this is, I hate to say gravy, because, but it's unexpected, and the reality is, every single person who works for us made that happen.
Yes.
When people come, more people come to Richmond schools, it's because of every single person from the superintendent all the way down.
The one thing the board, you could consider, I'm just thinking out loud here, and I'll look at this with Tammy, this one-time or bonus, is you could look at the dollar values that you're getting above the 11 FTEs that you budgeted for.
Okay.
And use those dollars, assuming we don't have any structural expenses.
Okay.
To be part of this one-time, because that, you are correct, it is every person in this organization that has done something to encourage a family to come here, whether it's the bus driver, childcare, lunch aid, teachers, principals.
So that's truly the gravy.
Correct.
If you, if you look at.
This is just, this is just assuming the 11 FTE.
Everything stays the same, so anything above that figure.
So, going back to that enrollment, what is the increase? What are you thinking we're going to be up? What's your best guess? I know, you don't want to say it, do you?
What's the spreadsheet you have here?
That's the headcount, but again, you got to look at, we have, we have headcounts in there that are not full FTEs.
I can wait till October.
If I was a gambling person, I'll do this, I don't gamble.
We're not holding you to it.
I'm going to say, we're 40 up.
That's what it looks like.
If I was a gambler, I would say we're 40, we're 40 up. But there's a lot of time, we can now account this.
There is, I know that.
And there's a lot of things, hurdles that we got to do when kids are absent, if we don't do accounting, we've got logs of online students, we've got to make sure they're done correctly or accounted, there's so many variables that could affect that number.
And people will pull even in the first second, I know, we used to have kids leaving within the first month.
You will get a recruitment for some neighboring school districts who will recruit, right, at count day, to have their kids on count day, and then.
Then they're back.
Then they're back. So, I mean, there's, so, it's, it's the, it's what we live with every day.
What do we, what do we do to make sure they're here on count day?
Yeah, really.
Well, we'll do a lot of incentives, I mean, they do, and the issue on count day is, and it's, it's easier if everybody just shows up on count day, it's done.
Yes.
But there is a window that, if they're absent on count day, we still have a window to count them.
It's a myth to say, to give those gifts and have people there, it's a myth. It is, it is a myth, because you have 10 days for unexcused kids, 30 days for excused, 45 for suspended, if they return back, so it just, it's a myth when they give all those gifts.
It's just nice to get them all in and counted on one day.
On the one day, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Right, that would make life a lot easier.
Right.
Do we do any communication to our parents as far as that count day?
Yeah, the individual building, they, they stress it, and they do push it.
Okay, good.
So I have a question for the athletic part, is that going to be a yearly, is that going to be a nightmare for Tammy, as would say, not that, you know?
I would say, if you're going to allocate a dollar, if you're allocating a dollar, it becomes now a structural expense, that Preston in this case would know, and I'm just making this note, I'll use the 40,000 that Margaret used, if you allocate 40,000 for uniform, then we got to allocate what groups are getting that dollar at what year in the intro.
Oh, like do it a tier, like this year, this?
Like a tier, who is the most needy this year? Who is, who's already gotten a uniform that can wait two or three, the assumption would be that becomes a structural expense going forward.
But we're not expecting that this is going to cover it all, so there's still going to be some fundraising, probably, just hopefully not as much.
Well, you have, you have, the hope is to minimize that, because you have the need, you know, if I'm, I'll pick on Mr. Evans, because he and I just had a conversation about the fence out there, you know, he may say, I need, I don't know, four dozen baseballs. Well, he wins the lottery and goes to Hawaii and is off on the sunset, and the next coach said, no, I need nine dozen baseballs. So there's a, there's a difference between an individual coach's need and preference, what they see, and what actually, and it's hard to find what actually that is, other than you can say, we need uniforms, we need a bat, we need a ball, but then you get into the type of uniforms, we can do a basic uniform that will get us this, and it will cost about this dollar. If you want to upgrade it and get the Jordan or the Nike or the.
That's why the whole point, that we never got the information on, the whole point was, what does it cost to run the sport? Not that I want fancy this, fancy that, because we have coaches that do that, and that's their, that's fine, but what's the basic cost to run that sport? That's the question. And so then, when you put a budget, then you figure out what that is, that's what you get. So if you want extra things, that might come into your fund, or you want fancier warmups or whatever.
A bag or.
But, but for a parent to understand, your kid's in the sport and we're funding it, this is what we fund, the rest of the stuff is extra. And that's what I don't think some parents are being told and are getting, Brian, that's where I've been coming from with it, that you hear parents talk, they think they're paying for their kid's uniform.
So they want clarity as to what they're paying for.
And that makes my head spin, because why, why is that happening?
Because currently, we aren't paying for uniforms.
We are not.
It is solely the fort that you pay, right, which was the discussion, the starting discussion, why it was even on here, so. I will, I will talk about, bring some information on current pay increase for current all employees. I will try to get a more, as you said, an accurate budget, Margaret, but I will start with what you saw in, yeah, June, I think that was. Bonuses for all employees, what might be an off-schedule payment, what we call an off-schedule payment might look like. The, the other pink items, band, art, choir, robotics in there. I would also. I would also like to, and if the board would at least entertain me, look at something like some type of communications contract to focus on newsletters. We have about thirty percent of our population, student population, does not choose Richmond Community Schools in this area. They choose homeschool, they choose parochial schools, and they choose other school of choice. Now, I'm not saying we're going to bring them back, because people make that decision for their own interest. But a lot of times, it's because of something they heard about or experienced years ago that may not be the case now. And in order to get that message across, we need some strategic communication with those families that do not have kids here. The, or even the families that their kids are grown and they are voters in this district. So, if they're going to support the school, they need to know what their dollars are going towards. Because it's real easy for some with the mindset of, my kids are up and gone, I don't need a store, what's it going to?
Now, you're saying newsletter, do you mean this would come out like monthly or?
And that's what I'd like to look at, what other districts do who have, and I'm going to call it a communications director for lack of better word, I don't know what it would be called. But what do they do and what do they, they use it? And we have districts that have similar enrollments, smaller, that have, this is their person's job.
I would say go ahead and do some check.
I mean, I'll just bring it back to you and we can look at it.
Yeah, at least.
We're not voting on it, so.
No, no. And then I would say, get the information. I would also say put a teacher in there.
Yes.
The teacher is, I, I, that is one that I really need the flexibility to add.
I would say that.
Okay.
I think that goes without saying though, right?
Is there a parapo on there?
I'm sorry.
Do we have extra parapos?
It's not on our purple list, but Brian's going to get us those figures and what we could do if we were to give them.
So, do you, are we just like, what do we want us to do? Go down the line and say things that we want to see happen, or you want us to email you those things? And, you know what I mean? But I don't know, I don't know if you'll be bombarded with all a hundred things.
Well, I guess, if you, if there's something that's pressing that you would love to see in this organization, I think it's something that we need to talk about, because as a, as a member of the community and you're, you're in charge of the policies of this board, this would be the time. If there are things that we'd like, you know, there's, there's a difference between what I really think we need for this organization to make us even better and what we would like to have, because again, I, I don't want to put us in a position that next year, maybe, maybe we got a hundred dollar per pupil. You know, I always count on a hundred dollars or fifty dollars when we did the budgets in the past. We may have one more year of good, but after that, I just don't see with the economy, the inflation, the cutbacks in jobs, at some point, this is going to reset itself, this economy. I think, I mean, I, I see housing markets dropping. I mean, that's, I'm not an analyst, but it's the foreshadowing of what we went through, and hopefully it won't be what we went through in early two thousand. But, you know, these, some of these housing prices are just not sustainable. And so, when, I mean, just that impact, I mean, we have a, what's the, what's the other part of our foundation, Tammy? The, the non-Homestead, where, where they're assuming we're levying that. We're already getting, we're not going to be able to levy it because of the heavenly amendment that we've lost money. I think it was a ten, it was twenty thousand this year, I can't remember if that, about twenty thousand. If that heavenly amendment goes, rolls back again, we could lose more revenue. Right now, it's an expense line item in, in the budget. So, that, those are things that I just don't, I would be cautious not to want to spend all of it and make sure we are fiscally sound with what we're doing. But yet, put things in place that make sense for our organization and the school district.
Can I request one more thing?
Yep.
Brian, can we get the figure to, for the contracts as far as from here to when they're up? Because remember, we talked, you said, you suggested, or we put some money away. Well, what could that, or what could that possibly be if we want to keep that contract at least until we renegotiate? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll talk to Tammy on how we do that, because we'll probably take just the total salary of what we did.
Is that possible, Tammy?
We'll have to play around with that.
We'll figure it out. I'm just thinking that would give us at least an idea of maybe what we should put away.
Yeah.
Take that fix and.
Because the other thing we have.
Make sure that we can pay those contract up.
The other thing we have is we have some people that retired, and we replaced some at a different pay scale. Some we brought in at a higher pay scale because we, we had to.
Right.
And I don't know, the settlement of that yet, could be bad, so we'll work on that.
Okay, that, I just think that would give us an idea of what we want to definitely take off the top.
I'll at least be able to hopefully bring you at the thirty thousand foot level of what we're looking at.
Right, right.
Just don't hold me to the exact number, because we'll.
Brian, what I would love to see is that every single high school student, even more, but let's just start with high school, sits down with a counselor for thirty minutes and discusses their career path plan, what they need to do to get there. And I need, I mean, and every other thing too, I think that that would help in mental health aspect. I think that would help drive them. I feel like they could talk about CT programs, which ones offer certificates that they can join the workforce right after high school if they're not, you know, going to move on to college, or, you know, I mean, the armed forces, all the different options that they have.
So, that's not already happening?
They're not spending thirty minutes, I can tell you, we have one counselor.
That's what I would love to see.
Spending thirty, they're not spending thirty minutes in four years.
Yeah, I don't, and I think that every single high school student, every single year, because their minds change or things change, you know what I mean? Like, just make sure that this is what you need to be doing, not be on that path, like, you're on the right path.
I will calculate, my rough calculation, that's we need two to two hundred and fifty hours just to do that for our high school. But I will.
Well, and that's part of the whole piece of looking for another counselor. We've already had that discussion, because you have counselors, guys, that do just at the high school academic counseling.
Right, and they just do scheduling, I'm, I'm talking about.
I know, and then you need a counselor to do what you're talking about, because just that academic piece, there's scheduling in that. There, there's so much more that you guys don't realize what our counselor is doing.
Oh, I'm sure, I wasn't saying that they weren't doing, I'm saying.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, that's why we put in, we have it, and I know we've had it posted out there.
We've had it posted since.
And have not had.
A long time.
Do, have we not had success, because are we not competitive with what we're offering?
Or they're just not there?
Or they're just not there?
A lot of, a lot of districts have put in more counselors slash social workers in their budgets because of what they're doing. They're all in the same boat in terms of trying to find people. Some districts have got, opted to contract services with agencies. You know, that has its pluses and minuses.
Okay, well, that's what I would.
But I will, I will, if you're looking, if you're, if your bar would be thirty minutes for every kid, every student, excuse me, I will, that would be a position.
Yes, that would be a position.
Just my rough numbers here.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any other suggestions for Brian? This list has gotten a little long.
So, a lot of this, we already have starting points for, we'll have to meet with the team tomorrow and Wednesday to.
So, be prepared as a board.
We're still doing the numbers on the two-tier busing, or kind of waving that out a little there? I mean, not that necessarily has to happen this year, but maybe for something that you can just keep.
Down the road.
Or have a whole nother discussion about our transportation busing.
I'm saving that for my comment at the end, I'd like to talk about the busing in a minute, a lot more than what we just did.
For sure.
Is it a budget busing?
I just think that we should, we have too many students on these buses, and I guess I was going to ask, I mean, do we have another bus that's sitting there? We just don't have a driver.
We don't have drivers. We don't have, we have no substitute drivers. You know, I radically, I threw this out there to Tammy, I said, maybe the board's willing to throw this out there. We have staff that are salaried employees, are you willing to do a lump sum? Once you get your bus driver license, you get a large payment, and if we need you, we'll drive. And I'll just use myself as an example. We're short as a bus driver. All right, now, the challenge, we have some staff, I need staff in front of kids at seven forty and seven fifty. But like, for instance, a coach, if you gave him, made it worth their while to become a bus driver.
That's interesting.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not an easy process to become a bus driver.
No.
I asked Susie about it, it's hours and hours, it's probably a four-week process. And assuming everything goes well in that process, where you've gotten your training, you've gotten your secretary of state, you've passed all of them. It's a process, and someone who needs a job and they see that, hmm, maybe not.
Well, and you know, okay, so maybe that's a thing, if, if your, your concern is more of the fact there's too many kids on the bus, and so we don't have enough drivers. So, maybe it's more of a conversation of.
With a one-tiered system.
Right, with one-tiered system. So, what does that conversation, what he just said.
Look like if we went to a two-tier.
How would ever increase another bus route? Add a whole nother route to the, the current system we have, which would take us, and then the kids wouldn't maybe be on the bus as long. Right now, my children are getting picked up at six fifteen and their school doesn't start till seven forty. They don't get home till after four.
But that's where you live, that's, that's real.
But I live literally fifteen minutes out of town, so why are they on the bus for an hour and a half? I mean, it's.
Because you live in the country and the stops are such that the way that they are, just to get, get to stops.
If they didn't have to stop as many stops though, if there was an additional route.
Most of our, most of our stops, and it just happened because we've talked about, most of our stops are door-to-door because of the geographic of our organization. It's country stop.
But in addition to that, the buses are full. In addition to that, though, the buses are full.
I, I have no doubt, and part of the conversation we've had with the buses being full is the cost of gas. Are more kids choosing to ride the bus so they don't have the, paying the cost of gas over previous years?
I wonder how many kids at the high school are riding the bus?
That, that I don't know. And there's some, there's some things we can look at and speculate, but if we are going to, there's really two options for the buses that I see just in a basin. Adding more buses, we have spare buses, it's not good to use them all on the road, because things happen to a bus, they break down, you have a spare. But to do that, we need more bus drivers. We have no bus drivers. Or we look at a two-tiered system, which will reduce the number of kids that get on a bus. But with that, now you've got the issue of parents who have the high school kid at home, who has to get on the bus, and now I got an elementary kid at home who.
Yeah, has to get on at a different time.
An hour later, the bus is coming back to pick them up. We have a lot of families in that situation that, that is going to create problems for them. So, we could say, okay, let's just offer free childcare, bring them early, we'll offer free childcare. We can't even get childcare work, we're struggling getting childcare. And again, I don't mean to, and don't take this, I'm making excuses, it's just the reality that we're all facing, all districts are facing.
So, do we know, like, because I'm sure we have numbers, then, there are more kids riding the bus this year than, than versus past years? Or is it just a fact that we just don't have enough bus drivers? Do we have less bus, buses running?
We have, we have one, two years ago, we ran, is it the Zebra? One of the buses we ran two years ago. We had no bus drivers, so we had to eliminate a run and reconfigure it. That run that we ran last year is the exact same run that we're running this year. So, our bus capacity is more because of that elimination. If I could get a bus driver, then we could, in essence, put the Zebra back and then spread the kids out. But we're still in some buses, you, we're, we're nearing.
So, this person that you want to get as far as like a communication person or whatever, they would then get out the word that we need a bus driver? Like, is that something that that person would do?
Usually a communications director does direct newsletters, whether you want something that goes out monthly to household. They usually manage a Facebook, we do a great job with all the staff that are doing it.
Yeah.
Eric's always putting stuff up there. They get into other social media, Twitter, Snapchat, forgive me, I know.
But that is something that they.
But they, they are the ones that put marketing brochures together, so when they get the call from the chamber, do you have anything that I can do? They got everything ready to go. If they're at an event, they're the ones really promoting student first. You know, again, I, I think we've done a great job. I mean, eight, nine years ago, we were two hundred and fifty-nine followers. We're well over three thousand, and we're targeting families that want to know more about our district, but we're not hitting a lot of them also.
Well, then, okay, then, why not have the, the look, you looking at, what could we do financially to add another bus? And if the idea is reaching out to employees, it could be a custodian, it could be a secretary, anybody, maybe look at that. And so, that might be something, if you could add another bus, you're going to take kids off the bus, that might do little. And then, and then you can just keep, keep looking at what else you can do to improve. But if we've got, you know what I'm saying? Look and see what, what would it take to, see if there's anybody else within the district that would want to be a bus driver?
Oh.
Yeah, Brian, even in the summer months, that would get, offer them something, if we're going to have the summer school programs, then they would have a job in the summer, maybe if we.
You're right, we offer, we offer busing and it's run through who's available. I know some, what we've experienced this past summer, there was a lot of staff that just wanted a break and didn't want to.
Drive the bus.
Teach or drive the bus, finding them, but, but that's, that's anomaly. But I will look at what, adding a bus driver, what we could do with current staff, incentivize them be, getting a license.
I, I do know a lot of parents that do drive, you know, that are.
There, look at that parking lot in the morning, there's a lot of parents that drive.
That's why the two-tier busing.
Primarily because they know it's just, it's insane to, how early we have to get them on the bus and how long they're on the bus. I mean, that is the biggest thing. If we could create some sort of a better situation there, we may even have more parents using our bus system.
Problem with that is we don't have drivers.
Right.
And we got to find the drivers, it's not the buses, we have to find some drivers. So, every one of you, we're going to start driving, right, classes?
That's not my thing.
No, it's not my thing.
Because I'm not doing it for free, so, no.
Uh, Brian, the routes in the city, is it house to house or is there immediate?
No, they're, they're what we call group stops. So, like at Lake Angeles, there's a large, where they may have twenty kids getting on at one stop.
Okay, all right, so we've already.
So, in the city, yes.
Okay.
We still have the mile, we walk the school a mile, and I know over eight, nine years ago, that went back forth a mile, a mile and a half. You expand the route, kick people off the buses, I mean that respectfully, but it reduces the crowding. But you also have a group of people that you now, who are used to busing, that no longer are eligible, so. So, Janice requires, yes, city stops around here primarily are group stops.
Okay. How many students are more school of choice? I know we have a few stops that we pick up school of choice children as well.
We have it listed, but I can get to that example, but we don't have, if we had ten kids, that's a lot.
Okay.
We list them on the website because neighboring districts do that. One of our neighbors to our, was it west there, actually comes into our district and picks up kids. So, we have not done that, because we've been trying to make sure our residents have first priority. And except we did identify perimeter stops, but I can get to that number. I don't, I don't believe we have very many, if we had ten, I would be shocked if it's more than ten.
Okay, anybody else?
I got a good list.
I know. Okay, we're good? Okay, so, my comment will be, you're, are you going to try to put something in our packet, Brian?
Yep.
Okay, so, maybe it's going to be really important for the next meeting that you take a look at your packet and look at that stuff and be prepared to come sit down here and let's talk. Where do we, where, where do we feel, where's the need, where's our, you know, it goes back to what are our priorities as a district, okay? Okay, we're going to move on to our M A S B Fall Conference discussion. Candace, you want me to start or you want to talk?
Um, you can start.
Okay, Candace actually talked to me about doing this. She needs to get her, her one-on-one class in, and that's the only place right now that's a, physically she can get it. And I have, actually, I talked to Margaret for a little bit. We used to, as a board, attend the Fall Conference, and not everybody, but some members of the board. So, we, and Brian, I talked to Brian about it too, and he said there are some monies that we may be able to draw from. So, the discussion is, would you want to go to the conference? I know the brochure, Brian put the brochure in the packet, so you can see what the conference is and what it involves. If it's just, we're going to pay for Candace to go, I don't know, so I'm looking for some thoughts or input.
And to reiterate with depth, that in this year's budget, the state legislative and governor approved school board reimbursement. The school board one-on-one class is only eligible for fifty percent reimbursement, but other classes are, are a hundred percent reimbursement. So, at least for this year, we, we in essence are putting the money out, if you, if you choose to, from the district, and then we do the, whatever the behind the scenes from the state to get that money back. And I, and I don't know what that process. And I, and I don't know what that process is, I think that may come out in January, but, um, you know, a lot, many districts, and I've talked to my colleagues just in general, do have an allocation, um, set aside for this type of thing. Some send theirs to federal, uh, conference, they send a representative, you'll hear the Macomb School Board Association, every year, I think it's at the end of February, end of January, February. I'm not aware of which one has sent anybody, but, again, it's, it's the district's choice.
No, I don't think so. We have never gone.
Uh, we, to be honest though, we've never, in, in looking at the hassle, you guys as a board chose to not get paid, chose to fund it other than 101, anything you want on your own because of our financial situation. So I think you're in a position to at least put a dollar value there and if people want to go, do you have it, if, if you choose to?
Well, I, I'm excited that Candace wants to go to 101 in person because that's the way to take the class.
It is.
Um, there's no other way to take it. Um, and so we have always, we've paid for the, um, 101 and when I went to Traverse City many years ago, the district paid for my hotel, I stayed overnight and the district paid for that. I paid for the different, in depth, the classes are, they're, they're ninety-nine dollars.
I know, are they?
I paid for the different classes that I wanted to take myself because as a board, you know, we weren't doing that. Um, so I think it's great that you want to go and I think it's, like I said, it's huge to go to that class in person.
I went to that class in person and, um, I learned a lot there actually, but, um, it was just one day, it wasn't a whole weekend.
Well, the weekend has all kinds of things going on.
Yeah, I would be interested in going.
Um, and there's all kinds of stuff going on.
I would take a lot more than just the one day.
Right, yeah.
You know, if I could speak more and I'd do it.
And I, Margaret, I'm looking like, oh, that's in the morning.
Well, there's, there's the fee-
There's a page that has-
There's the fee that if you go, it's, it's a one day and it gets you into the-
Yeah, it is.
Four hundred dollars for, I think, the time per person, for the weekend per person. And then I think you get one seat, you get one class with that.
Oh, that's-
And then you get to do all the things you want to do and then it's like a hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred and seventy dollars for hotel per night. So that's what, that we would be looking at from what I looked at.
Well, and they have, if you get in by September nineteenth, they, there, there are rooms that are booked, like the year that I went, we, I, it happened after, so I stayed at a, at a different hotel because those were all taken already. Um, but it's, if you look at the cli, if you go, if you go on Friday all day, what does it, what does it say the price is virtual? Friday only is a hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And what that get, that'll get you into all of the, um, sessions.
Cleaning sessions.
Those different speakers in that.
General session.
But if you're, if you want to take any CBA classes, that's extra. So the, so the Friday, if you go Friday, it's a hundred and ninety-eight dollars, you get your breakfast and lunch, um, and if you register after September second, so actually it's two hundred and sixteen dollars because it's after, after September second.
And just on that Friday, what does it start at eight, eight o'clock, eight-thirty in the morning?
Yeah, so when I, when I did it, I went up Thursday night.
Mine starts on Thursday. It starts on Wednesday and, and-
No.
Yes, Saturday it says, or Sunday.
It's Thursday according to this.
Oh, I thought it was Fri- No, I'm looking at Fridays right now. The CBA ones are, um, curriculum and instruction, district strategic planning board, operating procedures, creating trust. Nope, they're all one hundred to-
Okay, alright, okay, so then, the 101 class is Thursday.
I would go Thursday.
Or you would, you would go Wednesday night, you know, because it starts at eight-thirty in the morning. But that's what, when I went, I went up on Thursday night, I left Friday, I did whatever my stuff Friday night, drove home Friday night, just stayed one night.
I didn't stay, I was thrown in the morning.
Did you really?
I went to Lansing.
Lansing, it was at?
Oh, I'm like, you went to Traverse City.
Not an hour later.
Oh, gosh.
I mean, if the board's going to consider going, including the hotel cost as reimbursement, um, it would be a better bang for your buck if you had two people and you just shared one hotel because you can get a double bed, or you have two double beds and if they're willing to share together, which we normally do with everybody else in the organization, you can get, you only pay one hotel if it's two people together.
Right.
How many people would be interested in going? Candace, you said, and I would be interested in going as well. Um, that, I saw there were some.
Yeah, well, I have to check the dates. I've got something that might conflict there.
What about you? I think it would be a great team building experience for us too if we did it together.
I've always been in for funding our education.
Absolutely.
Uh, and since it's being reimbursed, I don't understand why, uh, we would need to pay out of pocket.
What I, can I interject here? What I don't know is, is this conference is being reimbursed or the classes would be-
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if these courses are just the kind you can take any time of the year and if they're part of that reimbursement. Um, but I believe educating, um, you know, we're one of maybe ten to twenty percent of districts that don't send board members to, um, learn how to be a board member and I think it would save us money in the long run.
No, we always send how to learn how to be a 101.
But there's, let's, there's many other courses.
No, but to learn how to be a board member is 101.
But it doesn't hurt to have a refresher so we know.
Well, then, there's so much more.
More beyond 101.
There's more beyond that piece.
Beyond 101.
Yep.
Just like when you go to college, you take something 101, it's not the end of the year.
Absolutely. So are we, so is the discussion here that the district take up our total cost? And Brian, is that possible?
Well, the reality is the district's gonna-
If we did a room.
The district's going to have to pay it ahead of time-
Anyway.
To, to register, I would think. Because I think you get a different hotel price.
What I would look at is, I would, I would, sorry Margaret, I didn't mean to cut you off, Deb, I didn't mean to cut you off. What I'd look at is take your dollar value that's on that board and if as a board you collectively want to say-
We want a board.
We want to invest in our board and future boards because at some point people are not going to be on it, so you could have new people.
Right.
It's happened many times. And it, now would be the time to put that structure, it's a structural expense. Now, if we can get the reimbursement through it, then it's, it's a revenue, it doesn't matter, but you're actually creating, this is what we want to do now going forward, is build a cost. So, if you're looking at probably, if you're asking me in my opinion, I'd allocate five thousand dollars as a board education workshop.
Okay.
No matter what it is. So if, and if this board wants to take this particular one, you're probably talking to say if you have four people, two people, you're, you're probably talking seven fifty a board member by the time you do rooms expenses and if two people share the rooms, you minimize your, so you're, you're, yeah, two, that's a figure, a thousand, thirty-five, three thousand dollars is probably going to cost to send four people to what-
This conference.
And I've heard nothing but good things about this conference from the MAS, the Macomb School Board Association. Many districts send them there.
Right.
This is good stuff in, in here. And so, I don't see this as a detrimental, but I think, I think you need to look at it as, we're going to create an education account for school boards. And when things like this come up, and let's say you spend three thousand, I'm just making the number up, and you've got two thousand still sitting there, maybe you do want to send someone to the federal, to the national level and start. Because out of the Macomb County, there's probably twenty-five percent, maybe forty percent of the district sends someone to that national level. They just usually send one.
Right.
Sometimes there's a group that go, but it's usually one. It at least puts you in that position to be able to have that conversation.
At the county board dinners, they always talk about going-
And they give scholarships there too, to theirs.
How to be able to go, all of that. Yeah.
So if you're asking my opinion, I'd allocate five thousand and if board members want to go, we share rooms, if possible, two rooms.
I think this needs to be by the nineteenth though, registered by the nineteenth.
It's just coming up.
Yeah.
Real quick. Well, that's for hotel rooms, it's not-
To get that rate, to get that rate.
Yeah. It's, I, I think registration closes, or is it just the hotel registration closes?
Well, so the two hotels that they have rooms reserved better.
I thought the whole events registration was closed at September nineteenth.
But I, I would think, if you set a dollar value, we're going to have five thousand and Tammy and I would add that. And again, I just picked five thousand because I want to make sure we're covering, I don't do that, um, for board education, um, training. So 101s would still come out of that, you know, like we normally do. We have a small, I think we have a couple hundred dollars in there because we don't typically have a large expense for the board.
Well, we are in the business of education, folks, and we should be doing it ourselves and not just our kids and our teachers.
Absolutely.
I mean, this is part of, what we took on as responsibility.
What's the cost for Thursday?
If we go up on Wednesday and stay Wednesday night?
No, 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 what's the cost? If you look at Friday.
Just why they only registration, Saturday.
A weekend rate for like four hundred dollars?
It says three sixty-nine for the whole conference.
Yeah, but that's, that's every single day.
Yeah.
But the daily rate is one ninety-eight.
Oh, one ninety-eight.
Or two sixteen after, it's two sixteen now.
Where does this?
It's just, she's got- It's on page twenty-five of the big, huge packet.
So if it's that, we move around.
But then it also says, if you take your whole board, buy six, get one free.
[laughing]
It says we'll offer a rebate equal to one board member for the full registration fee if the entire board goes. So if all seven went, you're really paying for six.
I don't know if there, like it only says Friday only, Saturday only, it doesn't give a-
There's not a Thursday.
There's not a Thursday only.
Well, but it, it taught, but it says, if you look at Thursday, it, there's two, two things, eight-thirty to three-thirty, a hundred and ninety-eight dollars each.
Right.
That's, so that's, that's what I'm saying. And then in addition, the, um, no, that, that would be it. That would be what you would do, and quite frankly, neither one of those things would interest me at all. I, I would rather do CBA classes. See what I'm saying?
Board member certification classes on that day.
Would, would-
Yeah, there's, there's two sessions. They do a, a morning, there's classes and it gives you the list of the classes you can pick from, or, and then there's in the afternoon. But this, the pre-conference full-day workshop, um, you either pick the Guiding Public Schools for Increasing Academic Achievement or Michigan Council's School Attorney's Fall Conference.
Can I, can I provide a direction to the board on this?
Absolutely.
If you, if you set, and again, I'll just use five thousand, and you said we will cover the hotel, the conference and the meal, which is typically what we do for any employee. Um, and then this way, the conference, if Angela wanted to go and she's able to stay the whole time, but Danielle couldn't, I'm sorry Danielle, couldn't go the whole time, but maybe they can go Friday, we're at least covering what they're able to go to. Um, so we do hotel, conference and the meal allowance. I think it's seven fifty for breakfast, ten dollars, or eight dollars for breakfast, ten for lunch and fifteen for dinner, unless it's included, then you all pay.
Right, because I know most of them pay for breakfast.
We do that normal food allowance. I believe that number, I mean, it's up to you, you, you just wouldn't have to submit the receipt. We could, we could register for the hotel and conference once I know who. But if you did that parameter, I think you'd be, I believe you'd be covered and I would be, it would help address individual board members' need and their availability before I'm trying to get to.
So if there was anything, um, left over from the five thousand, say you only spent twenty-five hundred, whatever board members wanted to go, would that money be left in there throughout the year if they wanted to take it?
Yes, I, I would say it's a five thousand dollar training for board and you guys, and if we start running out, then you'd have to increase it or, or, if you don't use it, then it just goes in the roll-up at the end of the year.
Right, because there'll be CBA classes, there'll be spots in February, they do them and they do something again in May, so there's, there's different times throughout the year that they do them.
Maybe people could put their, I, like if, if they wish to take additional courses, they can let everybody know so that funds don't get completed, depleted by one person.
Wouldn't we have to approve?
You know, just to make sure.
Well, I think if the board's going to go that route, what I'd ask for you, and it's just maybe verbal from everybody, that we allocate five thousand and you say, okay, who wants to go? If we identify who, then I can work with them to get their hotel and conference booked. And then if you want to do the meal allowance, you just turn it in after. If you don't want to cover meals, then you just don't turn in a receipt then. Um, and then we would go from there. And then I would, I'd work with them individually.
Sounds good, I'm good with that.
So if by tomorrow, I mean, do you want to know who wants to go or do you down, so you have an idea? I know about how many I need, I know I heard Sandy was interested.
I'm looking at my calendar.
I'd like to go, I don't know the specific dates.
I'm interested.
Alright, so we got two and a maybe. Danielle, you were, a yes, be interested, you obviously brought it to us.
Candace.
That's Candace.
Candace, you obviously brought it. Margaret, interested?
The only way that I would be able to go would be to do Thursday and there's, the classes just don't interest me that day. I can't go Friday.
I'd have to, I could only, if I went, I could only go Saturday, but four's, I can go in Sunday, but I would check into it.
Are you interested in going? So right now, we have four interested and-
Maybe.
Well, maybe. So if those that are interested, is the board good with four? What we talked, then if you are interested, let me know what dates tomorrow. Shoot me an email, what days, so I know what to register. And if you need to look or you're maybe, if you can let me know so I can confirm that we've got everybody. And then, um, are you good with pairing in a room?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay. Alright, I will work on that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, we're moving on to bond updates. Ms. Wamsley?
Um, I really don't have any updates. Um, there was some damage done by the, um, windstorms that were going through the insurance,
but I'm working with the contractors in the bond and just extending their contract that will reimburse through any insurance claim. Like, for instance, outfield fencing, any roof repairs, escrow roofing was out there doing some siding, pricing on the siding that got damaged in that storm. So other than that, we're moving it forward. The brick should be arriving for the, the additional dugout we added because of the, the safety concern at the end of this month. So you'll start seeing the new JV softball field dugouts going up. All the other ones are done, and the netting should be up. I believe it's two more weeks, and then the netting arrives, 'cause it takes four weeks, four to six weeks for us to get the netting once the poles are up. So we're moving forward. And we're already planning for next year, the, the last part of the bond, which would be the, um, uh, road back here in front of the middle school, the middle school parking lot.
Thank you. Next section, our next item on our agenda is public comments. Any founder of the public may address the board at this time. Please sign in and state your name. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any board comments? Or public comments? Excuse me.
I'm Sherri Jarrett, I'm a teacher in the middle school, I'm a member of the RIA. Your discussion about what to do with your extra fund earlier was very interesting, and I was actually happy to hear you were keeping sums aside. Just a thought, your idea for budget or bonuses? Yes, staff would love that, no one would deny it. But I was wondering if you might consider a classroom allowance, a one-time, you know, one-time, give each of us a hundred dollars to spend in our classroom. Years ago, we used to do that. That would be amazing. And then also be really good more hours to for staff to be able to get something for our room, but we, yeah, 'cause we want to use it with our kids. That was all.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments? Okay, moving on to superintendent and legislative update.
Uh, I encourage any retired teachers out there who have been out of the classroom for a year or two, if they're interested in coming back subbing, there is a, no earnings limitation anymore. So if you're itching to come back and substitute, we'd be more than welcome to. We will be hiring our, any retirees that we have, we will hire them directly rather than third-party. They'll get their jobs through Red Rover still, but as I said earlier, in July, the governor signed the bill, Public Act One Eighty-Four, which adjusted the time period rather than twelve months, you had now have to wait nine months. It removed the critical shortage list for retirees, and it removed the requirements that the districts had to pay the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. Oftentimes in your budget, it's U A A L, that we refer, that we pay to the state, and they, or they give us money, we turn around and pay it back to them. That went into effect July twenty-fifth, but there is push to eliminate the nine-month waiting period. I don't know why they did this for public schools, but if I were to retire from the college or university level, and I was in the state retirement system, I could start the next day being a retiree-hire, no limitations, literally the next day. But for public schools, they now make you wait, they used to make you wait twelve months, now they're down to nine. I don't know whether it was a motive, but if you want to degrade public schools, they're doing a good job by including a separate set of standards for public schools. Last week, the Let Michigan Kids Learn Coalition turned their second petition in for a two-part ballot proposal. The first petition was tuned, turned in two weeks ago, which would create a student, what's called a Student Opportunity Scholarship. The second would create a tax credit for students, for scholarship opportunities. Uh, the signatures will be, are being reviewed by the Secretary of State, and will go before the Board of Canvassers for approval. If approved, then the legislature will have forty days to consider the petition and could adopt it. If they choose not to act, it will be placed on the November twenty-twenty-four ballot. This is an end-around to vouchers. So it's a way of creating a charter, which this state has publicly, and many times said, "No" to voucher. The other campaign, the other side, the For Michigan Kids, Our School, For Our Schools Coalition, continues to inform public legislators and the public about the negative impacts of this proposal. Again, if you're taking a tax credit, you're reducing tax revenue, you reduce the money that goes into the school aid, which, it's a domino effect. Just be on the lookout. It won't be on this November's ballot, but it is scheduled, if it's approved, to be on the November twenty-twenty-four ballot. Depending on how the, the elections go in the, in November, we have a lot of new legislators, and districts are redrawn. There is that period of lame duck, that we are in that period, that the legislators could act and approve this, so it doesn't have to go on the ballot and goes into law. So just watch, watch the, um, the legislators after the November eighth election. If you have not, board members, you should have received an invite to the State School Board Candidate Forum, which will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh. The public is welcome to join too. It's at seven-thirty at the M I S D. Uh, the M I C is located Garfield and Hall Road. Uh, Tim Skubick will be the moderator of the question-and-answer forum between Pamela Pugh, who's a Democrat, Tammy Carloni, who's a Republican, Mitchell Robinson, who's a Democrat, and Linda Lee Traver, I believe that's how you pronounce it, is a Republican. There are two spots open. I strongly encourage everybody to, if you can attend, to attend. If you can't, please educate yourselves on the candidates that are running and their position. This is one time I can say something publicly or politically. Um, we need candidates at that State Board of Education, number one, who are public education supporters and who are doing the right thing for public schools, 'cause they oftentimes establish policies that we all have to follow. Uh, I hand it to you in your packet for the listening audience. On November eighth, the Macomb Intermediate School District will be going for a special education bond proposal. Uh, the purpose of this special education bond proposal is to construct, renovate, and update facilities where Macomb County Special Education students go for school and receive specialized support. Uh, over the years, Richmond Community Schools has sent and has students currently attending these programs for either all or part of the day. Uh, so Richmond will benefit. If you've ever been to some of their facilities, uh, these are center, oftentimes called center-based programs. Many of the buildings are in dire need of either a complete rebuild or renovation. Um, Special Education Services, if you did not know, range in Macomb County and, and state. From birth to age twenty-six, Macomb County is, probably has the most premier special ed services in the state when you compare us to other counties. Um, we run services for students with autism, deaf and blindness, emotional impairment, cognitive impairment, mult, severe multiple impairment, physical impairments, uh, specific, specific learning disabilities, speech and language impairments, visual impairments, and traumatic brain injuries. Thousands and thousands of kids in their county receive these services and would benefit from them. For the average Macomb County homeowner, and this is the average in the county, uh, they're, they're going for a point-one-seven special ed mileage, uh, bond. It would cost you twenty-dollar, less than twenty dollars a year for the average Macomb County homeowner, which equates to about five cents a day. I support and hope our community supports this special education bond, as it will support our special ed population and our, those that are most needy.
Brian, excuse me. Do you know if we're a Saint Clair County resident but live in the Macomb County School District? Can we vote on this?
Yes.
If you are, if
Yes, you live in, you are Richmond community, you know, you're Richmond Community Schools, yes.
And because Richmond boundaries are part, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Where if you have the Macomb County tax assessment, like, sorry, that wouldn't apply for those, because it's only for the county, or because this is the district of it, it would be included, so it's all Richmond. Again, it's five cents a day. I know, I know some families are, are, but the, the benefit these, these particular students need and the, the facility they need, it's well worth the, the investment. Uh, last Wednesday, I had an opportunity to meet with Anthony Forlini, our county clerk. Just reminder, Election Day is November eighth, and County Clerk Forlini is projecting large voter turnouts in both in-person and absentee ballots. Uh, there are two very divisive, can be divisive, I didn't put it that way, ballot proposals on the, that will be, the Supreme Court just ruled, will be on the, the ballot. Um, he asked me and the other superintendent to share for any staff members who may be off that day, any community members, 'cause we have no school for students that day, but there are some staff that have professional development that day. Any community members, uh, they're paying, I think it's about twenty dollars an hour for election workers, that you have to commit to the whole day. Uh, he's also encouraging any students sixteen and over, they can be election workers, so what a great way to experience election and the democratic process. So I have a flyer that I'll be sending out to students and be posting, just a reminder, if you're interested, um, they're looking for election workers there in dire need. Uh, I believe he said the average age of the current election workers is seventy years old. Which isn't a bad thing, don't get me wrong, it's a bad thing, but, um, we need more people part of that process, because it is a, a great
Hey, Brian, on that note, um, I don't know if I make sense, but, um, I've been working elections since I was a senior in high school, so I've been doing it since two thousand for twenty-two years. And, um, in Macomb Township area, in this area, is roughly three hundred for the day, is what the paycheck is. And it's nice, it's, there's no taxes taken out, it's just a flat three hundred dollars. And, um, like you said, they can start at sixteen, so if I would have known about that as a sixteen-year-old, I have the day off of school. I can come in, sixteen-year-olds can't come in until ten o'clock, but ten, they work ten o'clock to eight-thirty, and it's an easy three hundred dollars, so.
Okay, at Lee Elementary School, uh, as reported by Mrs. Manguni, the first week of school was actually a great success. I think one of her posts on the second day of school is, "We have no criers."
Yes.
Which is a remarkable accomplishment for elementary. Both enrollment at Lee and at the preschool has increased this year. Uh, N W A testing begins next week. Uh, teachers will use the data to begin informing instruction as they get that data from N W A. Uh, the marching band at the high school will be performing at Lee on Thursday, September fifteenth, uh, as one of their assembly kickoffs. Uh, and Mrs. Manguni and Mr. Gibson, if you were at the, um, uh, Good Old Days Fair on Saturday, we're part in the Dunk Tank on Saturday. I understand, I was not there, I was up at Elmo with my daughter, but, um, I understand they got dunked quite a bit, so, thank you for doing that. At the middle school, as reported by Mr. Bartels, um, again, first week, a lot of smiles, um, had a little hiccup with the weather and the good old, uh, Blue Devil days, um, but we had a great turnout the second day, or the end of the first day of school. Pitcher Day is completed, uh, was completed on Friday. We moved pitchers off Blue Devil days at the middle school. At Meet the Teacher Night, they had clubs and organizations that had booths set up. Uh, that was the first time they did that. It was really nice to have that set up and, and get kids and, and parents to realize what other options are, are there. Uh, we've already held our first fire drill at the middle school. All sports have begun, and safety patrol sign-ups are occurring with the program starting very soon. At the high school, um, as reported by Mrs. Zabo, um, Pitcher Day, number two, makeup for Blue Devil Days. We had a little power issue here on Blue Devil Days. Uh, not all the pitchers were taken, but, um, is, um, scheduled for, actually today it was scheduled. Uh, seniors have begun painting their parking spots. Uh, it's a tradition that I think, um, I look forward to. There's some very creative seniors out there. Uh, if you get a minute, take a minute to look at their, their designs. Uh, Manufacturing Day has established our partnership with L and L Products out of Romeo. We'll have thirty students and two adults that will be attending on Thursday, October sixth. Uh, Manufacturing Day is the largest, um, event, I think in the nation, Macomb County puts on every year. So it's a really, more information will be coming, but, um, it's coming October sixth. Powder puff football for homecoming week is next Monday night at six-thirty. Uh, students are signing up during lunch, and practice starts also this week. Uh, the Spanish trip that was approved by the board with Mrs. Smallwood is taking place over spring break, uh, next year. Uh, and discount registration has been extended until September twenty-eighth, so if there are students and families that want to go, um, it's really the nice opportunity, it's, it's a phenomenal opportunity for the price you're paying, and they have payment plans where you can pay over time, so you don't have to have all of that upfront. Uh, as I said earlier, N W A testing starts next week, and then, um, you've probably seen on Facebook, if you are following Facebook, there are many teachers in the district who are trained in the, uh, Kagan Cooperative Strategy. They've been posting on Facebook, it's been exciting to see that throughout the, um, throughout the, the first couple of days of school with our staff. Um, today, there was an incident, um, that happened, I just want, I've, I've gotten two, two phone calls. I told I will get many more. Uh, I started putting a communication out, and things happened, I need to go back and finish it. But around one-thirty, I received a telephone call from the Richmond Police, informed me that there was a car chase down Division Road by Low Plain. Uh, the car being chased was by another police agency, wasn't by Richmond Police. The car crashed, and the suspect fled on foot. The police informed me that they had set up a perimeter where the incident happened, and when I asked if the district needed to be in lockdown, or what we call lockout, which means business as usual, we don't let everybody in the building, I was told there was no need to implement that protocol. Within ten minutes of that, I, I notified the board, I notified building principals and department administrators and secretaries and other people in the organization to at least get them on their toes, because if we had to react, they needed to be aware of it. Um, I reminded secretaries that when they're, um, letting people into the building, our, our protocol and the signs, if you've seen them by our, um, they were paper signs previously, but the permanent signs went up today, um, by our custodial staff. But the paper basis said, "State your name and your purpose for being in that school," rather than just buzzing it and recognizing. That's, that is, uh, moving forward, but it's been our protocol this year and going forward. Since incident began, um, like I said, I received, I had two, two parent calls, one very irate. I would just ask people, I have no, I have no problem answering the phone and calling people back. But threatening comments are not going to help the situation, and people's comments can be taken multiple ways. And I'm sure this, this particular parent did not mean any harm by the comment, but it could have been taken in a different way. When the emergency occurred, um, as with any emergency, I base it on the information I have at the time. We've had a great relationship with our police department. We open our buildings for them to walk in our buildings anytime they want. They have our EMS, fire, we encourage them to get to know our buildings, come in. We host, uh, trainings for them to use our facilities for drug-sniffing dogs and bomb-sniffing dogs. Countywide, we are, we have a great relationship. I had no reason to believe that the information that I was receiving to doubt them. Yes, ultimately, it was my decision not to go on lockdown and lockout, or even prevent individuals from leaving campus. Because the second call I received from the police at two-fifty basically stated to me that they were calling off the search, and there was no indication that the suspect was armed or dangerous. It was just a routine traffic stop for something that happened, is what I was told. At the time, middle school and high school students were already dismissed, and, and walking or driving home, uh, though those that rode the buses were on there. Elementary school was dismissing at that time. Again, I, I made the call based on the information. I know I did not make some parents happy, um, and for that I do apologize. Uh, I at no time felt any of our students or staff were at danger. Uh, I, I was on that call with the police, I asked specifically, and the, the response was, um, "We do not need to be in lockdown." Since then, I've had an opportunity to scan social media, um, and I'm amazed at some of the stuff that people, which I can understand if a parent is reading that and taking that as fact, why they would be upset and nervous. I, I get that. But I would just ask that, um, you know, myself, my administrative team, our teachers, I believe every one of our staff members would do anything they have in their power to prevent someone from getting hurt in this district. They challenge their own, um, their own safety, I think would be secondary to making sure our kids are safe. Again, I rely on reliable sources. Um, the, the police department and I have had an outstanding relationship. Chief Tashki, uh, and our new police chief, um, we've worked well together in the past and continue, um, and they keep us informed. They were not even the agency that was in hot pursuit or in handling the situation, from what I understand, uh, the facts that have been given, but they took it upon themselves to make sure we were aware, um, you know, we, we didn't get a call from the Sheriff's Department, we didn't get a call from any other agency. It was our Richmond Police, uh, and so I, I thank them for their dedication and hard work. Um, for the parents that felt I made a poor decision, um, I, I apologize that you do feel that way. But let me assure you that if I felt at any point our kids were not safe, there would have been a different decision made. With that, I have no other comments.
Thank you. I have one quick question. Are, are they looking at new teacher certification? Is, is that enhancing right now, or they're having conversations about changing the certification?
They, um, they actually did change the certification. It's being phased in, where now you are K-three, and I'm doing the memory, so I might be a little off. K-three, or K-two, three, five, six, eight, and nine, twelve, and there's some specialty, they are changing. But when you change it, it takes years before it goes through the education system. They are looking at other ways, like, for instance, um, as I mentioned earlier, there's hashtag teach, which allows people who have a degree, a bachelor's degree in chemistry, and I pass the chemistry basic skills test that teachers take, but I don't have the student teacher. I can get an interim certificate, be in the classroom, and then it takes me two, three to five years to complete that process, to get a permanent certificate. You have Teach for America that's out there. You have, um, Troops for Teachers. There's, um, there's multiple ways, alternative ways to get a certification than just with the traditional way of attending a four-year university, going through the teacher ed program, so.
I had started to see it, I just hadn't seen a follow-up.
We are, um, this first teach, hashtag teach was, um, in a conversation with the union, 'cause I didn't, I didn't know much about it. And, um, so we had to figure and work through our way and learn a lot about it. I spent, um, quite a, probably about an hour and a half, I call on a Saturday with the founder of the company to call me back to walk me through this process, because, um, but yeah, they are doing interim
The state accepts it?
They are, they accept it, uh, as long as that student, or that student, that teacher completes the program, they have three to five years to complete it. If at any time that teacher drops out of the program, that, in this case, hashtag teach, is required to notify the state and notify the district that person is working in, so that would repeal their interim teaching certificate.
Thank you. Okay, this time, we're gonna do items of interest from the board, so I'm gonna start down there with Sandy. Have any items of interest?
I don't know. Well, other than saying that, um, I had a fun time at the parade on Saturday. I learned I can still kind of jog a mile, didn't I?
You mean Sunday?
Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday. But it was a good time. It was, uh, everybody really enjoyed the flags and stuff, so, and it was fun to get out there and see them and get involved.
Cool. Thank you. Danielle?
Um, I just want to let you know, I won't be here at the next meeting. But other than that, I'll be on a family vacation.
Cool. Where are you going?
Uh, Disney Cruise.
Oh, my goodness. Nice, nice. Okay. Thank you for letting us know. Um, Angela?
Um, I too. I had a great time at the, the Good Old Days Parade and, uh, marching or jogging with many of you fine members up here. And it was great, and I'd also like to thank the, you know, festival committee and, uh, the parade committee for always doing such a great job over here.
Um, Sherri?
I'm outside tonight.
And Margaret?
I echo the parade. I did not jog.
Was not going to happen. Um, but I, I, I mentioned to Sherri that for however many years we've been doing this, I believe that yesterday was the first time where there was so much positivity coming back to us from people along the streets. Just so much of, just good stuff, and that, that just feels really good, and that's the whole point of getting out there is to promote our school district, and I just think the more we district, and I just think the more we do it, and just to thank those staff, Dawn Makar, Renee and her fiance Nick, Ms. Cagnack, Ms. Durst, the, we had two from transportation.
Two of the bus drivers.
Right.
Megan.
Megan.
Yes. Just that our group was small, but it was mighty, and yes, there was a lot of running down the street, and Mrs. Walmsley joins us too, so, just thanks for that stuff. I also want to just acknowledge at our football games, Mr. Trend, when the game starts, first game was the fire department, second one was the police department, that they came out and they raised the flag, did a ceremony of raising the flag before the game, I just think that's really, really cool, and apparently VFW members are going to do the next home games. So just, just to acknowledge Mr. Trend for that neat idea and for those individuals that came out and did it, it's, it's a really cool thing. And I just want to throw out that a week from tomorrow, our absolutely fabulous Renee Ara is getting married, and so good luck to her, and she beams if she, if you ask her about it and the details, so good luck.
Thank you.
Also?
Yep.
I just wanted to say the same thing about the parade, that was a lot of fun, and thank you to the bus drivers and everyone that came to help, and maybe next year, we can decorate the bus a little bit more.
We used to decorate the bus, yeah.
We can't find the banner, we used to have, and we moved, we did the move last year, the banner, it disappeared, so we have a few new banners.
Yeah.
I just also wanted to talk about the Blue Devils night last week at the middle school, it really was, it was a game changer for having all of those tables set up with all of the extracurriculars to sign up, because as a parent, before this year, we would, that area was used for taking photos, and I liked that it wasn't that night, because we could walk around and see what all of those other courses actually were about, other than just having flyers sent home if you even got it, you know, from your children's backpack and crinkled up, not knowing exactly what it was, so it was nice to talk to those that were running the programs and get a feel, better feel for how much time it would take, and so I just, it was really nice.
And that's, that's it. Just on the bus thing, are we, how are we advertising for?
We have an ad, we did a newspaper ad in August, we have an ad that's getting ready to go out again. When we post a job on our website, it goes onto multiple sites that people typically draw from. We've tried Indeed in the past, we don't always get, I don't think we've had any luck with Indeed. We'll put it on Facebook again, see if people will share it. And I talked with Tammy and talked to, and Suzie regarding, can we create a, we haven't set this up, and we're thinking, you know, my idea is create, got someone in there, how do we expedite their training as quickly as possible? Can we have a bus driver who can do the training? We have a trainer already who doesn't use it during the day between runs, but maybe we need to look at running it after the run, an evening route, so if they're working during the day, they can get the driver at night. We just need to look at all options, and we're, everything's on the table.
Are we going to park the bus out with a sign?
They did, or, they did order a sign to put on the banner, or to put on the new fencing there, because it takes it farther out, so we can do a larger banner and permanently attach, and we could look at putting the bus strategically located somewhere.
Would that have been like a cheesy thing to do?
A lot of districts do that, you drive around the district, many districts do, they'll park a bus somewhere, I know the ISD has one in front of theirs, Chippewa Valley has usually one, right by Dakota High School there. It's hit message, just getting the message out there. I think the big bus catches people's eyes, and then you're either going to see it and say, I'm interested.
I think maybe also advertising what the requirements are to be a bus driver, and if we're willing to train or not, like maybe people just don't know.
We've done that in the past, Suzie just sent us one to put out, we're tweaking that right now, but yeah, we're going through, and we do pay for training, so if someone goes through training, it's not like they're not getting paid, we do run paid training, and, you know, with the hope that, we've had some bus drivers through the process, they will pay for the training, but when they get to the end, they don't finish it, so it's a risk we take, but we're willing to try anything.
Yeah, okay.
So that full-time position, and then there was a part-time position also for the bus drivers, was that before Terry's letter of resignation, or after? Are we looking for two plus a part-time?
What our ultimate staffing wish list, what we want to be is, we have Suzie, who is halftime Richmond, halftime New Haven, usually she's in Richmond in the morning and goes to New Haven in the afternoon. So when Suzie's not here, we put a position called a dispatcher in, which is Lori Wagner. Lori can ride a bus. Very often Lori is being pulled to drive a bus, because either someone called in sick and we don't have subs, or we just need her. But our goal is to have a bus driver for every drive, every run, have Lori and Suzie not on a bus, and one more bus driver, and have that person come every day, and whether we're fully staffed, then we rotate it, so every, whatever thirteenth day you get off as a bus driver, or we have you reassigned to other thing, but have always one ready to go. Because particularly when we get into the winter season, the need for after-school bussing increases, and a lot of times our end runs do not get back to run sports runs after school, which creates another level of challenges for, but that's, that's where we're trying to get to, that level of, every driver, every bus has a driver, we have a spare, if you will, Suzie and Lori are ready to go, so that we, we've pulled bus drivers from New Haven, when they had, they've come over and done our runs, we've covered their runs and we're able to cover it, so we have build back and forth each district that time. I think probably in the net, it might just balance each other out, a lot of paperwork, but we pull wherever we can.
So technically, two full-time?
Technically, two, to have one as a dispatcher, so if there's a problem or calls, parents have, we have someone answering the phone there, which that creates another level when we don't have that of frustration.
I too just want to express the parade and thank people who participated and who put it together. It ran really, really well, except for the big gap behind us, but it was a lot of fun, people loved the flags, it was just a really good advertise, and I would agree with Margaret that.
You wouldn't run either?
No, I did, but I'm, but I'm a little sore in the calves today, I will admit. But there was a lot of people, it was people that, what was kind of cool for me is people who had graduated and now have kids in the school, they, they wanted to stop and, you know, say hi, and what were they doing, and it was just really positive. I would agree that it was a very positive day yesterday, so, and that's all that I have. Okay, we're going to move on, we have an action item for, I'm looking for a motion for the approval to purchase gymnasium graphics from Print-Off.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase for gymnasium graphics from Print-Off for a total not to exceed twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, plus ten percent for unknown site conditions as outlined in the attached documentation, from which the funding from the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three general fund is authorized.
Do I have support?
Support.
I'm going to put Candace in. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I am looking for a motion for the approval to purchase electronic marquees from Curb Appeal.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase for three electronic marquees and two entrance signs from Curb Appeal Concepts, eight, for a total not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, plus five percent for unknown site conditions, as outlined in the attached documentation, from which funding for the twenty, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three general fund is authorized.
Do I have a motion of support?
Support.
Sandy was there? Thank you. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the authorization for Tru'n Law to investigate a board policy violation.
So that we can actually have some discussion on this, I will make the motion to authorize Tru'n Law to conduct an investigation to determine whether board members that violated board policies.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. The next portion then, obviously, is discussion. I shared with everybody the conversation that I had with our attorney, as far as some actions that were taken by Danielle. You know, I really, I have one question, I guess, Danielle, and that would be, you know, did you contact Centerline Public Schools under a board, using a board name or board title?
No.
Then why did I get an email that stated who contacted me, what board member contacted me? Was I the board member that contacted them? And if not, who was it, or please forward it?
So I called them and identified myself and said, I'm calling for some additional information, because I had some questions, and I identified that I was a board member, a board member, that I wasn't calling on behalf of the board, but I was calling as a board member, because I didn't want to trick her to think I was some random, excuse me, random person in the public, but I let her know who I was. She continued to talk to me, and she just asked that I use the FOIA process and gave me the web address for the FOIA, and I just used the FOIA to get the information that I wanted.
So by doing that, by acknowledging that you were a board member, you violated our board policy that says you needed to get permission from the board to take that action or to take that step.
But I didn't, I wasn't saying that, I see what you're saying, but I wasn't saying I was speaking for the board, I wasn't calling on behalf of the board, I was calling on behalf of myself. I was just being transparent in the fact that I am a board member, so if you choose not to talk to me, I completely understand. So I just let her know upfront that, yes, in fact, I am a board member, I said, but I had a few questions, and I wasn't sure if you could answer them. She said, well, what kind of questions do you have? I gave her my questions, and she said, well, you can, you know, rightfully FOIA that information, so I continued and gave me the address, and she gave it to me the next day. She submitted all the stuff I had requested the next day over FOIA.
But do you, do you get the point? Whether she continued to talk to you or not really isn't that point, because someone from another school district wouldn't have a clue what our ethics and our policies are. So when you call there and you say you're a board member, and you're asking questions about a process that happened, that is the superintendent's responsibility, not our job as a board member, that that's where you violated board policy. Because, let me, I'm just going to tell you, I, quite frankly, I, having our attorney have to investigate this, I don't want to spend taxpayer dollars.
One thousand percent.
Hold on, hold on. I, I don't want to spend taxpayer dollars on something that, quite frankly, you violated our board policy, just admit you did it. But you're saying that your first thing was, no, you didn't say you were a board member, now you did say you were a board member, but you weren't really coming across as a board member, but you are when you say, I am Danielle Sutton, Board of Education member. That's, that's the problem that I had. We, we don't have the ability to do that. We can direct our board president to do it, or?
We could direct you, we agreed.
If the board, if the board won, the board sits at this table and decided that something wasn't how it's supposed to be, and so we want someone from the board to look into it, you have no right to do that. And by doing it, and whether, and you, quite frankly, you'd have been better off having someone else call FOIA and get, get that information. It still wouldn't have been right, it would drive me crazy, but the reality is, you called and said you were a board member, and you were asking for information about something that's not your job, not your responsibility, and if you had questions about that, all you had to do was call the superintendent and ask him the questions.
I have a question.
So, to your point, to your point, I did not call Mr. Walmsley, because I was camping and had very low service, but I did send an email, hoping that it would eventually go through, and his response was, I'm going to direct that to Deb, because I asked for two questions, one was for?
There were no questions, you asked for documentation.
I asked for some backup documentation, because when Mr. Walmsley talks about the agenda, he says, you will find the backup documentation on the website, so I asked for backup documentation regarding two points, and he said, Deb, you need to take care of this, she's out of line. So I asked Mr. Walmsley for the information, he didn't provide it, told me I was out of line for asking questions about a hire, because I, I'm not, I'm sorry, but I'm not just a yes person, so like, I'm not just going to say yes to everything that comes across the table, so I had questions, but he wasn't willing to answer them, so I used FOIA to get the answers to those questions, so that I can make an educated decision.
Bottom line.
Let me ask, is it, would it have made a difference if, she just used her name? She is a parent.
She could have done that, and it would not have.
She is a community member. Would it, would it, to any of you, made a difference if she hadn't identified herself as a board member, or would you still be concerned? So.
I might still be concerned, but she didn't violate board policy at that point.
She identified herself as a board member.
A board member, and that's what she can't do.
So, we do have a responsibility, I realize Brian does the legwork as far as hiring and all that, we do have a responsibility as far as we have to vote on the hires.
Uh-huh.
So, if we have opinions about anything that we're voting on, we should ask questions.
There's a discussion at the table.
We should go to Brian, we should be providing answers or documentation, I mean, it states that in our policies also.
So let me, let me ask you to that point. So it's our responsibility to, to what? To, we get a, we get a recommendation for a hire, so it's our responsibility, our responsibility to challenge that process?
No.
Well, because that's what Danielle was doing.
That is what she did.
No, you have an opinion, or you have some information that, questions whether you should, how you, how you're going to vote?
Okay, let me just say to you this, because I, whether, again, do you, do you know what it was that she asked?
I did have a conversation with her, so, so that I could be clear.
Okay, so what did she tell you she asked them?
Just what she said.
Which was what? I didn't hear what your two questions were.
I didn't, I sent the questions to Brian.
What were your two questions?
The two question, one question, oh shoot, I can't even remember now.
Her first statement was she wanted Brian to provide documentation based upon the fact that there was rumors or talk of.
Okay, just.
And then the other question was about safety.
About it.
And the other one was about safety, because of what had happened down at Centerline in June about them finding bullets in the high school.
I, I, yeah, I, I remember the second one, I don't remember the specific, I can look up the first one, but the second one specifically was also, was a question asked during the interview regarding, what would you do in theory if something were a hypothetical situation? We've got Ivaldi, we've got the one down the street in Michigan, you like, we have all these school shootings that are going on, and it just so happens that the district had found paraphernalia on their campus last year during the school year, so my question to him was, what, a hypothetical situation, what would be her response, or what was her response to the situation that happened, so that I know that I have peace of mind that what, what, it was appropriate, or that it was sufficient for my understanding to make an educated decision, knowing that our students are going to be safe.
So you, so that, that's a.
But he could have rightfully just said, I'm sorry, I didn't ask that question. But he didn't, he just said, I'm directing this to Deb, I said, oh, does Deb upload the documentation now? And his response was, you're out of line.
You're out of line requesting the documentation, because that, again, won the whole.
No, what do you call it?
What?
What do you, what do you call B two, B three? What do you, what do you call B two, B three, B four? That's called backup documentation, yes?
What did you want to see?
I, whatever, this was, I can't remember what my first question was, I can't think it up.
I believe her question was, like, she wanted to know kind of what they did in the interview with the hiring process. She wanted the documentation from the hiring committee.
What documentation is that, ladies?
The thing is, is that what we're trying to say to you is, we as a board need to be able to trust our employees and our hiring committee to answer already those questions that you asked. Now, I do understand you had questions and I agree that your questions should have been addressed in some way. Even if he felt he didn't need to answer them, Superintendent Walmsley, which he didn't, because we, we, that's not our job. You know, we, and I trust a hundred percent the hiring committee and him when he places that. And if you choose and you don't like what he decided or who he hired, you have a right to vote no.
Absolutely.
So why didn't you choose that option rather than going these options of pointing documentation, which you haven't shared with any of us? You haven't shared any of this information with us that you were pushed...
I know, but you're approaching it as a board member. It's called, it's called just putting...
Because you have contacted us as board members about the situation.
It's just called being transparent to Centerline.
As a board member.
But it's not being transparent, I guess I'm fascinated that you don't see what you did was wrong, that you violated board policy.
But I was transparent with them and honest about who I was and wasn't hiding who I was to them?
Bravo, that's great that you did that.
Because you violated board policy.
Information because you said you were a board member.
Absolutely not.
If you would have called and said, I'm Danielle Sutton, you might not have gotten this information.
I wanna FOIA this information.
She would have told me exactly where to FOIA.
Or she would have been like, oh, I'm sorry, we don't give that information out, but you said I'm a board member and she may have knew. Like, I feel like by you saying a board member, she would have given you an edge rather than being transparent and just doing the right thing. I think it was a question to your benefit.
Okay.
When you did the FOIA request, did you use your name or did you use like, because it asks, sometimes it'll ask what business or whatever, did you put the...
No, it asked for name, address, phone number, and email and everything was my private information.
You didn't use your school email for the FOIA?
No, I use my central...
No, because they didn't have it because that's why I got the email that was asked.
No, there was, well, I left a voicemail and I guess she couldn't understand.
Okay, well...
Well, so moving, I mean, it was, Brian, were you aware of the request or the phone call that Danielle made when she first emailed?
To Centerline?
I was not aware of that until after it happened, when I got a call from the Superintendent of Centerline saying that they were contacted by a board member.
So if a board, so if we request some documentation, we're just automatically referred to the president and told we're out of line, is that...
The documentation was provided in your board packet, it was a backup letter like I have done for all our hires.
Correct.
That, that was the backup. This is the candidate that I was recommending based on the interview committee. I do not give the questions that you guys asked.
Well, I guess, I guess, the reason I kind of thought...
Because I'm assuming you trust the leadership here.
The committee.
And my support team administrator, Jamie, Renee who was involved, Becky who was involved. I mean, are we gonna question Mike Gibson because he hired a childcare person? I mean, you, how, you will not have people sitting on interview committee, if every note that they take...
But it, but you know what?
Well, there was...
Okay, Sheri, please talk.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, no, go ahead.
I guess, when I, when this came about, I remembered the football hire where there was, there was a committee report that we were given after we found out, you know, one board member got it. So we were providing...
One board member didn't get it, so let's not go down that road. Because you're talking about me and I did not get it. We all got it in our board packet. And we're not talking about me, we're talking about Danielle. I did not get it, smirk all you want, I didn't get anything suffered from anybody. No, I didn't.
Okay, well anyhow, I'll wound up getting that committee report, so...
Because that's what the, that's what the committee chose to do.
Myself personally didn't know if committee reports were a thing, if that, that's how it's done, I don't know. If, if there's always a report made to, to discuss, you know, how they came across, so...
That particular incident that you're referencing, there was other factors involved. We had a parent that wasn't, was not happy with the hiring of the coach. So there was a lot of stuff that went into that and so you guys were notified of that issue. So this was, all the pieces coming together. I believe since then, I've given, I, my standard now for all employees, when they're hired, administrator, you give me a letter of recommendation. In fact, even if you look at the communication I just did over with the administrators this year, we taught them how to write a letter of recommendation. Name, person, what strengths did they bring in, so forth. Oftentimes when you sit in an interview, you, I will talk about me, I may write a comment, not a good fit. Do I want that out as a public document? No, that is my personal notes on that. What happens when I finalize that and I put the letter of recommendation, that all goes away. I don't keep that stuff. This is my letter of recommendation. That's the backup that was in the board packet.
Wait, because it was my attorney.
I'm sorry, it's your turn.
The bottom line here is, I don't care who's writing notes, I don't care any of that stuff. The bottom line is, Danielle has said that she called and represented herself as a school board member. That is a violation of our board policy.
Period.
I don't, I, I made the motion just because that's the only way that we could talk about it, okay? I see no need to have the attorney investigate because she already said, yes, I represented, I was a board member. So I don't want to waste district dollars, okay? But the reality is, so I, if, yeah, I'm not, I think I can withdraw my motion, whatever. But the reality is, she, you did violate board policy, plain and simple. So as a board, then the decision has to be made, we, we say as a board, we cannot do this. This person should not have done it, we cannot do this sort of thing. That's what we have to decide as a board. To me, not going, having an attorney investigate and all of that, that's, that's silly to me if the person says that they did it. Now, she said she didn't do it, then, then we have to find out, okay? I, I would, I would lean towards that. But I don't think that we need to go to an attorney.
But what about going here forward, what do we do? Is it something we need, or, you know, I think Danielle's issue was the fact that it was administrator, I've never seen you go this far. I think she wouldn't do this for any care, childcare worker. However, is there some kind of way we could maybe have more information provided in the back of the station?
That's, that's a lot, that's a lot. What do you want? Just, hold, just hold on, I'm gonna, but that's a whole, that's a whole different thing though, Angela.
Sure is.
Let's focus, let's fo, but let's focus right now, we, we have someone who violated board policy. I, I am willing to withdraw...
Yes, but there's other, you've outlined other violations here and you're saying she only did one, so she didn't do these other two? You've accused her of other two, those ones she didn't do.
I didn't accuse anybody of anything.
Well, she, well, she outlined that you violated three of them, we're saying she really only violated, admitted to violating one. From my opinion, I feel like she technically only violated one. She may have been a little, you know, she, as far as asking her questions, you know, I feel she should have more trust in our team. But she has a right to ask those questions at the same time. So, like, how far are we going? We're just saying it's because she called and said she was, and then, and in her defense, I don't, she honestly is saying that she didn't feel like she was, shouldn't have done that. Shouldn't have done that.
If you want to tell me that I did it wrong, absolutely fine. Feel free to tell me I did it wrong, but absolutely, I did it in full transparency, so I wasn't being shady to anybody and pretending I was somebody who I wasn't. So yes, I called as a community member because my kid is in the district.
Called as a board member.
I called as a community member because my child is in the district and the safety of my child at some point would be in that hands.
You needed to say you were a community.
And secondly, I was transparent that, heaven forbid, I'm a, I'm a board member. So if you want to tell me I'm wrong, then fine, tell me I'm wrong, but in the, in the, for the sake of being transparent, well, okay.
But do you understand this now and would you like, try your best going here forward to not, you know, make sure we have...
No, I don't think it's trying not, I think...
Well, I mean, some, but sometimes we don't realize and it gets gray, you know? Sometimes things get gray and you're like, like, I honestly feel maybe Danielle didn't know in this situation that she was representing the board. Even though it did come off that she was representing the board. So, you know, sometimes we make mistakes and violate board policy unintentionally.
Yeah, but Danielle, we can all ask questions at the table, there's always a discussion, I need discussion. I mean, you can ask those questions at that time.
And that's what I wish she would have, which is what it came in that next meeting and had all those discussions and asked that to all of us.
So here's, here's the thing, here's my thing.
Today wasting our time.
And, well, and here's the thing, it could have all been avoided, one thousand percent, one thousand percent agreed. But when Margaret and Brian sat down with me at the board training and gave me the packet, I think Bridget was with me then.
No, it was just you.
Was it just me?
It was just you.
Okay. So when it was just me, they both said, if you ever have any questions, feel free to ask so that we can make sure everybody's all on the same page. And I said, absolutely, like, I will, like, when I'm in a new district, I will ask, where's the pencil? Or where's, like, I don't have a problem asking the questions. I have a problem that I didn't get a response, and this could have all been avoided of, not, I'm out of line, but I'm sorry, I can't answer those questions. Or for the second one of, you know, here's a hypothetical situation, what would you do type question? I'm sorry, we didn't ask that question on the panel. It could have all been easily avoided, not, you're out of line, I would have, I never got an answer from Mr. Walmsley or from Deb. So how am I, like, I'm still gonna seek out that information to be educated on my vote.
I don't wanna make the same mistakes. I don't wanna email Mr. Walmsley, Superintendent Walmsley with questions and then now saying I'm overstepping my bounds.
Okay, let me, can I interject?
Everybody's talked but me here. This first policy, I wanna do you think she did or did not. Are we saying, because I, I mean, in my opinion, I don't think she did, she may have not asked the questions the way I would have. But all Superintendent and President Mashad could have said, we don't answer those questions, we can't give you that information, we can't this.
I don't believe that would have stopped her.
It may not have, but we did not do that, nobody replied to her, so she had to go take things...
I did, I did, excuse me.
Deb replied for me, however, she said, Mr. Walmsley didn't like the way you asked the question, if you would have asked it this way, he would have answered it. My problem with that is, why didn't Mr. Walmsley just say, I'm sorry, could you be more specific, more specific about what you're asking? Or maybe I'm not the person you're asking. There was none of that, otherwise it could have all been avoided, I would have never FOIA anything.
I'd like to, I'd like to...
Well, no, don't, don't say it could have all been, because you're, you're pointing the finger at Brian, don't say it could have all been avoided if not for him.
He didn't communicate with me, he didn't like the way I asked the question.
You are your own person making your own decisions as a board member.
And I will get my information if somebody's not gonna provide it to me.
And see, that is the problem we have. And if we sit here as a board at this table and think that that response is acceptable, we've got a real problem here.
Okay, can I speak, please?
Yes.
Okay. First off, we do not hire and fire, and you know I said that, I don't know how many times.
Well, then I'm not gonna ever vote yes or no for any consensus, then don't, it's stupid.
Then don't, that is your choice. We have, we are policy and procedures, so if as a board, we don't like the procedure that's going on for the interviews, then that's where we talk with Mr. Walmsley and we say, we want to change it, we want to do it. But we are not responsible for actually doing the process. That's why we have a person, why we hire our superintendent, why we have a committee. That decision wasn't made solely by him. And at the point you asked for that, the interviews were done.
Yes.
So they may not even have had those questions or answers to it. The second thing that I would like to say to you, Danielle, is, and, and you have said it to me clearly, you are never going to talk with him, you want it in writing.
I, with everybody.
But you could have done a different step if you didn't feel, instead of doing the direction you did, you could have called me and said, hey, I'd like to meet with Mr. Walmsley, can the two of us meet? You, you could add whoever you wanted to that, to sit down and talk with him. And that is a step you have not done and I felt you should have done. And that's just me talking to keep that communication, to try to keep some communication going and instead of us going back and forth. We have a process, the part here where it says the superintendent will determine the process to consider, we've got that in place, the district has it in place. That is his responsibility, not ours. And you overstepped it by stating, and I'm, I'm telling you, you overstepped it by stating that you were a board member asking for information about a candidate that we were hiring.
So if I, if I overstepped it by being transparent, then I overstepped it by being transparent.
Okay. Oh, but you can't keep saying being transparent because that's just...
I'm not gonna lie to somebody about who I am. Then they're gonna accuse me of lying about it and, and steering that...
You shouldn't have done it in the first place.
Stop saying you're being transparent, you never should have done it in the first place. And you did, hold on, you did it because you weren't happy with the choice.
I didn't get an answer, no, I didn't get any answer.
You weren't happy with the choice.
I would have never asked...
And therefore you went, hey, yes, yes.
I don't even know who the hell the lady is or what she looks like, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, Margaret, there's not, you can't, we cannot prove that either way.
You are right, that's just my opinion, that is my opinion. But if, I'm gonna tell you, if we're sitting here, I, I will, I will withdraw my motion. Because I don't want it to go to the attorney for an investigation, I don't think it's need. Danielle has admitted that she called and represented herself as a board member. So as a board, we have to say, we cannot do this, no one can do this. This is not what board, this is not how this board is made up. And if we can't say that as a majority or the people sitting at this table, we have a problem.
We've already signed, that's in our policy.
It is.
I know, but we have someone who, who violated and we have some people who don't think it's, was a big deal. It is a big deal. Otherwise, why do we have policies? Why do we have rules?
And we can change them too.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I think that this creates a whole nother topic.
Well, hang on a minute, Mr. Walmsley, I'm sorry, Sheri, then I'm gonna give you the floor. Do we, are we gonna be reviewing any board policy this year?
I don't have any current ones that need to be reviewed.
Okay, so as a board, can we ask to look at, at that and review it? Can we do that? I mean, if we were to look at the policy for board members, can we review it? And do we have a say on what happens or how?
Well, it's our policy.
I know, but those come from, we work with an attorney to do that.
Correct.
Yeah, but like, even... What's to change though, Deb?
Exactly. Even when you go to like, well, I wanna, I wanna have everything. Our superintendent's job is to hire people, or you know what I'm saying? And then our job is to either accept his recommendation or not.
Or not, period.
I mean, it's not, that's not even just a Richmond thing, like, that's just, that's the superintendent's job and that's a board's job.
So what is, what is, my question was going to be, what is, so, yes, it's his job to do the work and do the hire and do the recommendation. If we don't agree with that or we want a little more information, are we still allowed to ask?
Yeah, we have to, yeah.
We could still vote no, I'm sure because it's a recommendation, doesn't mean we have to always vote correct.
Just be careful what you're asking for because then you will not have anybody start in this district. So these new hires that were, that are already started will not start in this district because now this board will not have anybody hired until they say yes or no. So the belief that I'm giving an offer to a person is now out the window.
You're right.
Right, what do you mean?
So I have a lunch aid, I hire him, Jamie Prostham, tomorrow that lunch aid starts, that won't come to your board meeting till the 26th.
No, that's fine.
But if you say no on the 26th, I have just told this lady on the 27th, sorry, you're fired, the board that...
Our, our approving this, and, and I hate the word.
This is a huge monumental.
It's a, it's a...
Well, so let me ask, it's not, it's, it's happened before in Richmond, I know it happened back when my kids were in school.
So...
What happened?
So the board didn't approve. They voted, what does happen?
The board voted down a recommendation from a superintendent.
So what does happen?
Okay, so I sent to this board my recommendation, I heard from one person, in my head, go forward, I got one no vote. Nobody else on this board told me else, so why would I doubt that this would not pass?
I know, I'm trying, I'm trying.
And I, I guess I am, I am passionate about this because you are gonna cripple this district.
What does happen though? What does happen?
Well, if, then if I would have had four people say, absolutely not, we're not hiring this person, then I would have had to contact with the board president, like my contract says, who you violated now twice my contract, and I haven't done anything on this yet. And you're right, I'm upset because I am the leader of this district and you're jeopardizing my credibility. Yet I don't want the embarrassment this district faced when I get a call from the superintendent of schools in another state, what the hell's going on in your district? Really, that's what we want to be looked at?
Yep.
I don't care what you call it, whether you're a comm, average citizen, what parent calls? Nobody does.
If you would, if I would have been able to respond, no, what's your call?
I gave you your response in the board packet, period.
We can stop.
You have the recommendation of the board.
That didn't answer the question I had.
How often have you called me?
You don't recall.
Since I've been on, no, yes, it does, because it talks about our relationship and working as a board.
It should be in writing, in writing.
No.
Yes.
Pick up the phone.
There's nothing that says I have to pick up the phone to call you.
You have a history of saying one thing and doing another thing. And I will, I will justify it.
Okay, Brian?
No, I am. No, I am. Deb, I'm going to make this point. Your first board, you sat and did my evaluation. You sat in that closed session. And I can share it because I asked for the closed session and said, "Yes, Mr. Walmsley is effective." What'd you do in the next one? You turned around with your other comrades on this board and voted against. Bridgette Shooboy voted against my evaluation. When you told me one thing in that closed session, you don't recall it? I'll pull the meeting. I'll pull my notes.
My very first evaluation, I, my hands were tied on what I could vote. I had to do it a certain way. I didn't have a choice.
No, I gave you an attorney-client letter that said how you were supposed to operate.
We're off topic.
No, we're not off topic because this is about, she attacked my credibility, Mrs. Zoubi and you. And I'm done. You have violated my contract twice.
Like I do at recent-
As a board, I'm talking the board. You violated it twice. What compensation are you going to do for me?
Brian, this happened once before in recent history. I've just, I asked the question.
No, it didn't. That never, it never got to the board table.
Nobody has been done.
That's incorrect.
I don't know about that.
I was on the board.
With Linda Olson.
It never came to the board table. Okay.
That's not the way I heard.
Okay. Does, I said I'm the board. I know how it went.
This was Sean.
Stop, 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 people. Done. Done. Stop the conversation because it's not going anywhere at this time.
It isn't. And I am demanding my contract be followed by this board. Period. And if anybody disagrees, hey, Sherry, you've got your dollar value to buy me out. You got halfway there. There you go.
Okay.
I'm, I'm done. This is ridiculous that we are having a conversation attacking my character. You had that letter of recommendation in the backup.
I asked for additional information and I was told I was out of line.
You were. Because it is not the board member's role to call and ask for-
I wouldn't have done that if you would have answered the questions. I was trying to get answers to my questions.
Listen, you were being out of line. For him to answer is a consideration. Like, I don't think you understand that. You violated his, you're violating his contract by trying, and you didn't just ask. You were accusatory and you were like aggressive about the questions and implying he wasn't doing his job correctly.
I said, "Please," and thank you, and also, come on.
You covered it in, in niceness, but it wasn't.
Show it to anybody. Put it on the screen.
Okay, enough. Stop.
The point is, is I am no longer going to tolerate people violating board policy or violating his contract because you're jeopardizing all of us up here.
Correct.
We're one board. If you mess up, we all get in trouble for it. And this is the second time now that we've had to spend unnecessary time, before we had to spend unnecessary dollars because you can't just follow board policy.
We also-
Are you on board? Do you want to be part of this team or not?
There's lots of those standards. It's okay.
Okay, Angela, Angela, Angela. Okay. At this point, Margaret has withdrawn the motion.
But I need, I'm withdrawing my motion. But as a board, are we saying we cannot violate board policy? It's not acceptable. Danielle should not have done it. Moving forward, we all better do our jobs the way we're supposed to do. I just, I just want that conversation-
This is where education could go a long way. Like, if we, you know, I'm sorry, but this is my point as far as educating, taking courses to teach you how to be board members.
Oh, for God's sakes.
We told, she just don't even-
Don't even leave.
We had a closed session about all of this once ago and she had this, she knew what she shouldn't be doing.
I know.
You know, it's getting frustrating now. If you need help reading through the board policies, maybe we all need to sit down with her and read through the policies with you so you understand them.
Give me a break.
Because this is, this is getting ridiculous. You're taking time away from us focusing on student. Deb's talking to you.
Angela, no, just, we're stopping.
Unless, can we adjourn this? We have nothing left to do.
But our, we have to agree as a board here that this is not going to happen again. As a board, do we agree that, that we must follow board policy?
I don't know. Do you, Danielle?
I got Sherry, yes. Margaret? Candace?
Yes.
Deb, yes. Angela?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, we're done. The motion is, I'm not sure what we do.
Yeah, it's just in the minutes it notes that I withdrew my motion.
Being no further business, we're adjourning at 9:54.